Just let me know. Seven, six, seven, oh, four. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So I will take roll call and all members are present either here in person at Adams High School or on Zoom. Hey, Kevin.
Hey, Kristin, how are you?
Good, we're glad to have you here. So I just want to explain a few things about this meeting. It's definitely unusual. So first of all, I wanted to say that on behalf of the board, we, thank you so much, Chris. We're so grateful to serve this community and we appreciate your patience with this very unusual meeting tonight. So we have, our board is here in person at Adams High School. Thank you to Mr. Cusmano and staff for hosting us, we appreciate it. And we have our presenters that are on Zoom, our audience is watching on Zoom here at Adams and also on YouTube Live. So this is a public business meeting of the Board of Education. The purpose of our meeting tonight is to conduct the Board of Education's business. This is not a community hearing. However, we do invite your participation during our meetings and we have several ways for you to do that. So I'll go through those really quickly. You can, first of all, request placement on our agenda. And those requests have to be in by noon Wednesday prior to the meeting. We have two citizens tonight who have requested to speak either on Zoom or in person, and that is coming up on our agenda. Citizens may also make a comment at the conclusion of each agenda item. If you're in person, please fill out a yellow card, those are out in the hallway, and give those cards to Christina, who is sitting down here in the corner. And we will make sure to call on you during the, during the public comment period. If you're on Zoom and you want to make a comment either at the end of the meeting or during public comment or during an agenda item, all you have to do is raise your hand in Zoom and we will have someone unmute you. If you'd like to share your thoughts with the board but don't wish to speak, we have blue cards out in the lobby and we also have a mechanism for you to do that via Zoom. You can, you can raise your hand and we'll send you a copy of that form. When addressing the board, please state your name and your relationship to the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. I'll remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. The board's role this evening is to listen carefully, hear your questions and comments. As such, we will not be responding directly to your remarks. If you're in person, we ask that you silence your phones and thank you again for attending tonight's meeting. So to get to our agenda, the first item on the agenda is Spotlight on Success. And we are going to hear about Musson Elementary and I think I will turn that over to Lori Gray.
Thank you, Mrs. Bull. One moment as I share my screen with everyone. Wonderful. I'd like to introduce the principal of Musson Elementary School, Mrs. Laura Walsh. Laura, would you like to take it from here?
Thank you so much and thank you for letting us join this evening. I'm actually going to turn it over to our first, first speakers of the evening. And I'd like to welcome Youssef and Ahmed Shada to begin the presentation.
Can you hear us and can you see us fine? So, okay. Good evening to the Board of Education, Dr. Shaner and the Rochester community. I'm Ahmed Chetah, a fifth grade student at Musson Elementary.
I'm Youssef Shada, a fourth grade student at Musson Elementary. We are very excited to be here this evening to share with you some wonderful news. Did you know that Musson Elementary recently received the 2020 National Blue Ribbon recognition?
That's right. Musson Elementary is one of 15 Michigan schools to be recognized with this honor and one of only 317 public schools across the nation to receive this award this year. U.S. Secretary of, U.S. Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos made the announcement on September 24th.
The National Blue Ribbon Program is in its 38th year. This program through the Education Department recognizes schools based on all student scores, student subgroup scores and graduation rates.
Musson was awarded this honor as an exemplary high performing school, meaning that we are among the state's highest performing schools as measured by state assessments. Schools are eligible for this honor every five years. Musson was also previously awarded the 2014 National Blue Ribbon.
So that means this year, 2020, was the next available opportunity for Musson to be recognized again, and we were. This year, the ceremony will be held virtually on November 12th and 13th. We will also receive a flag and plaque to proudly display at Musson.
So now you know a little bit about this wonderful honor. And I want to share with you my perspective on what makes Musson a great school. The heart and soul of Musson's success is all because of the amazing teachers, staff and families working together, helping each other and caring for each other like a family. And the bonds of friendship created there will last a lifetime.
Ahmed, I couldn't agree more. And I would like to add, we didn't win this award because I'm incredibly handsome and smart. We won this award because we love each other and push each other to succeed. Musson is like a second home to me because everyone is working together and growing together in friendship.
Thank you for allowing us to share this wonderful honor with the board tonight. Please welcome Mrs. Thomason to hear more about our wonderful school. Thank you.
Wonderful job, boys. And one of my former students, you should know that as well. Good evening, my name is Sheila Thomason and I have had the honor of being a first grade teacher at Musson Elementary for 16 years. I feel so blessed to be here tonight representing my colleagues in celebration of receiving the National Blue Ribbon Award. When I began to write this speech, I started to think about what makes our school and district such a special place to work. So I started to do some investigation. I added up all of the years our current teaching staff has been at Musson and it totaled to over 315 years with the average teacher being 10 years or more on staff at our school. We have had a lot of time to grow together as a community and as friends. I also believe the culture of our building started being built long ago by some fabulous foundation of strong educators. Then those teachers taught us and we have held on to the values and importance of a child-centered approach together. This legacy has also taught us the importance of growing professional and personal bonds with our colleagues. We support each other in our school lives and our outside of school lives. We have supported each other through the good times, weddings, babies, life celebrations, and through some of life's toughest lessons, loss, injuries and family emergencies. Musson is a place that I'm proud to call my second home. So when it came to completing our National Blue Ribbon application, we took our collaborative efforts to the next level. Our staff and some parents joined together to contribute to the draft and provide evidence for each section of the application, which is a long one if you've ever seen it. And just when we were getting close to the finish line, dun, dun, duh, the pandemic began. We actually completed this application completely virtually in a pandemic, thanks to Google Docs. That alone deserves an award. This award application is just one of the many examples of collaboration and action at Musson. We have an all hands on deck approach to everything. Our parents, paras, office, ancillary, custodial and teaching staff all contribute to what makes Musson great. We are proud to be a part of the greater community that is Rochester Community Schools. We have pride in excellence, excellence in academics, growing together in community, growing together in relationships. We are Musson Mustangs and we are Rochester Community Schools. Now please enjoy watching a video we created to share a little more about our Musson community.
With the 2020 recognition of the National Blue Ribbon Award, the Musson Elementary community is proud and appreciative. This award affirms the tremendous hard work of our community in upholding excellence in education.
The Musson community is so supportive. Parents and staff have been supporting each other before COVID and even more so now.
We persevere as an educational community that creates an environment of belonging for students and families. We strive to serve as an exemplar of all that is good in public education. We seek to grow and learn in all areas, to be examples to our students of thoughtful and critical learning, to enhance the community around us, to respond to the students we serve and to meet the needs they express in an ever-changing time in education and our world.
I love Musson Elementary because it's a great place to learn and have fun. And the teachers and staff there are awesome. And I think my life will be boring without Musson Elementary.
Musson Elementary is a diverse learning community focused on continual growth. Our students are curious, sophisticated and well-rounded. Our adults are attuned to our children, engaged and bring a global perspective. Our families prioritize and advocate for education and our staff are dedicated, high-performing professionals.
I love Musson because all of the teachers and staff work so hard and encourage us to learn, grow and be the best we can be. Everyone there is so nice and every day has new exciting opportunities and not one day is the same. I am thankful and proud to be a Mussering.
Musson continually embarks on researching and implementing best practice approaches to engage students in learning and deepening their understanding. Our teachers know that not all students follow the same learning journey. So it is imperative that we create classrooms that foster passion and persistence, allowing students to dream, then challenging them to be risk takers and take action.
Our Musson staff and parent community make Musson a wonderful place to learn and teach.
We focus on building relationships with our students, which leads to building culture within our school community. We welcome and honor all families' perspectives, values and traditions. We incorporate lessons and literature in each classroom that mirror the students we have here.
Hi, everybody. I love Musson Elementary because the teachers are very kind and caring towards the students. Also, I really like how we're doing the positivity project because it helps us become better people and friends.
Our goal is to better ourselves so that we can better our instruction. The culture of our classrooms and our school is important to us and we hope to continue to grow in this capacity. We are a proud elementary school within Rochester Community Schools.
I love Musson for all the learning opportunities it provides and all the kind and helpful teachers and staff. Thank you, Musson.
As proud Musson Mustangs, we are grateful for this honor and recognition. Thank you for joining us in this celebration of our community. I'd like to welcome Ms. Leonard to share from a parent as well as para educator perspective.
Thank you. Good evening to Dr. Shaner, the board and the Rochester Community School at large. Thank you. We're all familiar with the proverb, "It takes a village," and often a cliche. Well, I'm living proof that it not only takes a village, but one filled with compassion and commitment. My journey with RCS began at Musson over 10 years ago. We transferred in from a small private school and were welcomed with open arms. One fun fact to note here, four of my son's teachers are still at Musson today. Mrs. Buchanan was my youngest son's first grade teacher. Mrs. Steiger, who both my sons had for fifth grade, and in fact, my oldest son, now 22, to this day credits his fifth grade teacher and not me for being so organized. And Jamie, if you're watching for a 22-year-old, he's pretty organized. Mrs. King, both their art teachers, in which we still have pieces currently used in our home today. And Mr. Antonis, both their gym teachers, who I'm sure sow the seeds of their participation in middle and high school competitive sports. Thank you all. Well, as many para educators can attest to, as parents, we spent so much time at our kids' respective schools that we literally made a job of it. Again, I can say I was welcomed with open arms and even spent a brief time working in a kindergarten class at Musson. Now, what I hope will be my final school, I'm back where it all began, truly full circle. The Musson Mustang community, all these years later, from its principals, teachers, ancillary staff, office and para support, to those who feed our kiddos and keep our buildings so clean, it has continued to be a place I'm honored to serve and work. Congratulations, Musson family.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. To close our presentation, I just want to express, as principal of Musson Elementary, I could not be more proud of this tremendous honor. I am thankful to my entire team for their wonderful presentation this evening. They simply said it all. I would like to acknowledge and recognize our entire staff are watching from home this evening. I appreciate their support and know they all share in this moment. Finally, I'd like to recognize the Board of Education for their continued support, Dr. Shaner for his leadership and guidance, and our entire Rochester community. Although Musson was recognized, we know this honor would not be possible without the hands and hearts of so many. We share this recognition with our entire extended community. In honor of this special award, we would like to present a gift to the board and Dr. Shaner. Through the creative genius of Mrs. Amy King, our students and staff present this artwork to you, which should be there, as a celebration and with sincerest gratitude. This National Blue Ribbon Award is shared amongst us all. We are all rooted in RCS, growing together and soaring to new heights. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Laura. Wow, that was amazing. Lisa Leonard, I like, you get the star for tonight, those were amazing comments. I love the story is about your son and, and the teachers and your experience there. Laura, I love this artwork. Actually, I'll admit, I got a sneak preview of this artwork and I thought, I think that would be great on a card. So I don't know, like, mental telepathy there, I love it. Congratulations to Musson. Does anyone else have any comments about that? I know a lot of work went into that application and to all of your work there, just really tremendous. We're really proud of you. We look forward to celebrating in person as soon as we can.
Madam President, I might just want to offer our congratulations and just again, recognition of the staff and everyone that supported that application. Sheila, you know, in a normal year, completing an application is a tremendous challenge for a staff when they're, when they're tasked with so many things. And the hard work that went into that, even when you were shifting to remote learning and getting ready for a new school year and all of those things that go into that, we, we appreciate you. And the two young men at home right there couldn't, couldn't be more entertaining and couldn't be more of a, more of a sincere reminder of why we do what we do. So gentlemen, you are compelling why and you're also very entertaining. Thank you.
Yeah, love it. Thank you, boys, for being here and thanks to all the commenters, appreciate it. All right. Moving on our agenda, next item is communications and the first item under communications is board communications. Michelle.
Good evening. Prior to our, I'm sorry, since our last meeting, we've received 32 email communications that came through the RCS feedback system. We had district parents who addressed the board regarding the return to school learning options and those included comments from Lori Ann Baggett, Jennifer Haichu, Lindsay Bohannon, Stephanie Tigs, Simone Sojda, Natalie Pasqualonoto, Marie Van Berskik, Karen Stajninger, Michelle Ren, Deanna Harless, Brandon and Danielle Kennedy, two from Megan Murphy, Alexandra Sveradova, Julie Dwell, Vito Graziano, Kimberly Davis, Marissa Miller, Nicole Guy, Anne George, Catherine Agarwal and Leslie Nadel. We also received two comments from district parents regarding pool rentals. Those were from Laura Cassar and Stephanie Flader. District parent Mallory Mulnar addressed the board regarding special schedules at the elementary level. District parent Peter Albert addressed the board regarding the social and emotional health of district students. District parents Jamie Hilliard and Desiree Zenas addressed the board regarding mask requirements for students. Received communication from district parent Amy Ackerman regarding orientation for incoming freshmen. And we received a note from Meredith McCutcheon addressing the board regarding the meeting schedule. And we received two communications from district parent Alexandra Zverdova regarding instructional hour requirements. We also received 44 communications via email that did not go through the RCS feedback system. And those included communications from Charles Blackwell, Meredith McCutcheon, Brandon Hallway, Sukie and Nitya Rai, Beatrice and Zolt Sarkozy, Jackie Toll, Shannon Bamberg, Brian DeLucky, Karen Stajninger, Michael, Mike and Heather Chico, Jenny Hallway, Elliot Ryan, Debbie Olszewski, Colleen Dykstra, Kate Frazier, Kate, Kelly Brown, Sarah Pete, Amanda Green, Marie Van Buskert, Samantha Hillary, Jennifer Wilcox, Jessica Patelka Opfer, Andrew Weaver, Audrey Hernandez, Todd and Sarah Meech, Colleen Farley, Colleen Carney, Carolyn Reif, Tricia Baylor, Melissa Rambo, Christine Belinsky, Nina Ignazek, Kim Delanga, Susan Borowski, Joelle Keckwa, Kim Steb, Emily Francis, Sarah Patton and Brian and Michelle Kozelski. And I apologize for any names that I did not pronounce correctly.
Thanks, Michelle. Next, we are at item B on our agenda, student representatives to the board. Welcome back to our students, we're so excited to have you on Zoom. We can't wait to hear your reports and I'm going to put Sudan Kim on the spot for Adams only because Sudan, I know you've done this before, so you're the veteran here and I'm going to let you go first. So if you are available and can unmute yourself, oh, there you are, Sudan, and let us know what's going on at Adams.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Shaner and members of the Rochester community. On behalf of Adams, my name is Sudan Kim and I will be speaking. So to start off, we have students back in the building, which is an extremely wonderful event. Staff and students are doing a great job following all new protocols and guidelines to keep each other safe. We are extremely proud of our Highlander's for being flexible and resilient during these times. Our Highlander staff is continuing to work hard to make sure that the transition to the temporary hybrid model is a success. Teachers are working hard to make sure that both cohorts are on the same page in learning. A focus on social emotional wellbeing of our students continues to be a main focus. Our Link Crew program went virtual this year due to the circumstances. However, we had our great Link Crew teachers, Mr. Bondi and Mr. Bogus Lasky, were amazing in being flexible, creative and working with the Rochester and Stony students to collaborate with the Link Crew leaders. COVID-19 did not stop our current ninth graders from making connections and being supported during their transition into high school. Seniors successfully came into Adams on October 14th to take the SAT. Nine till 11th graders will be taking the PSAT on Thursday, October 29th. Good luck to all those, all those who are taking the test. And then a big congratulations goes out to our Lady Highlander golf team for competing with Highlander Pride to bring home second place at the state level tournament. We are planning on hosting our annual can drive for the Rochester area neighborhood house in the middle of November. Despite the circumstances, we look forward to seeing our students and families unite to serve the community. Finally, we will be hosting a blood drive. This blood drive will be held- This blood drive will be held at Oak Arbor Church on November 3rd, which is also Election Day. Members of the community ages 16 to 24 have the opportunity to receive a $10 e-gift card when they donate blood. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Sudan. Appreciate it. If you can stick around for a few minutes, we might have some questions afterwards. Next up, we're going to call on Sophia from Rochester High. Sophia, if you are on Zoom and can unmute yourself, we would love to hear your report.
Hello and good evening, board members. I am Sophia Shahaki, the board representative for Rochester High School. At Rochester, we began our second week of hybrid learning, the mix of synchronous and asynchronous learning. Synchronous learning at Rochester takes place with one hour and 40-minute classes where teachers mostly do detailed lectures like math notes and testing in school to ensure every student has the same opportunity to succeed in the classroom. For asynchronous learning, we do mostly supplementary material like readings of follow-up questions in my foreign language class or reading a novel in language arts. Teachers at Rochester are doing a fantastic job with balancing the work between the synchronous and asynchronous learning. On Wednesdays, students participate in a 30-minute Zoom call for each class. Teachers use this time to introduce new material to students and answer any questions or concerns from students. The culture at Rochester is still thriving and well, even with pandemic. Our football team is currently 6-0 and is looking forward to hosting Adams at home on Friday night for the first round of district game. The volleyball team has the City Cup Tournament against Adams, Stony Creek, and Luther North at Stony on Wednesday. And the boys' cross-country team has made it through regionals on Friday. Our student government is hosting a new event called Trunk or Treat tomorrow night from 5 to 8, a drive-through trick-or-treat where Brooklands, Meadowbrook, and Long Meadow students can get candy socially distanced from Rochester clubs and sports with 37 clubs participating. A group of students in our council attended a MASP Virtual Mental Health Summit where schools across the state were educated on mental health issues going on currently and how to implement social and emotional learning into our school curriculum. We have many more events coming up in the future like the Can Drive benefiting the Rochester Area Neighborhood House, along with our Week of Kindness to benefit students' mental health and de-stress.
Thank you, Sophia. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here. And last but not least, we have Viola from Stony Creek.
Hello, everybody, and good evening. I'm Violet Peanyani. I'm the Student Council School Board Representative from Stony Creek. So for the realm of socially-distanced events for Stony, our student council had a kindness week our first week of school where we decorated the locker banks with welcome-back decorations and we painted our bathroom stalls, which we did in previous years, with all of our council members and we added inspirational quotes about kindness and fun designs to liven up the school's atmosphere. We have also done student celebrations with the opportunity for teachers to nominate a student that has shown kindness in the classroom where they have the opportunity to give the student a prize. Our Stuko is also holding a book and school supplies drive starting today until November 6th with all of the books and supplies going to the Fisher Magnet Lower Academy. For the first year ever, Stony Stuko also has a council website for everyone to access more information, links to our YouTube channel and event information. To involve all aspects of Stony, we have also begun live streaming all home sporting events on our Student Council YouTube channel. This has been very successful in helping parents, friends, and family watch the games. Our football team finished our regular season undefeated with a 6-0 record and were the OAA champions. If you wanted to see more highlights and interviews for varsity football, we have highlight videos on our YouTube channel along with our video announcements. Our volleyball team also held a Pink Out game on October 20th to raise awareness for breast cancer and at that game, they beat Detroit Country Day. Continuing with sports, we also have two of our girls swim and dive members going to States this year. With student involvement, our Link Crew upperclassmen did a freshman orientation and tour to help get the freshmen ready to transition into the hybrid schedule. Our National Honor Society also participated in an event for the blanket charity Fleece and Thank You where they all made a blanket for the charity that will go to a child in a hospital. To transition, with the new clearance for us to do a play, we have started rehearsal for Stony's Fall Play called Parlor Games, which opens November 13th with performances on the 13th, 14th, and 15th and will also be livestreamed for anyone who is not comfortable going in person to watch the play. Lastly, I'd like to thank all of our wonderful Stony teachers who are going above and beyond and thank you for the board for giving us the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you. I guess we just wanted to know, on behalf of the board, I think collectively, we all kind of have a few questions for you. How's it going? So we appreciate all of these great reports. You're doing phenomenal in clubs and sports. How are things going for you personally? And what are you hearing from your friends? What's it like being back to school in person? I know you've been back there only, you know, two days or unless you're in Cohort A, then today was your third day. Who wants to speak a little bit about what's going on? Sudan, go ahead.
Yeah, it's definitely a different experience, though. I guess over this course of time, we have been accustomed to different. It's what we're getting used to. But I believe that the transition has been flawless. It's been smooth, given the circumstances. And yeah, all the teachers, all the students work together as a cohesive unit and as long as we continue to protect each other, I think we'll thrive.
What's it like, I'll call on you, Sophia, what's it like wearing a mask all day in school?
Honestly, it's not as bad as I thought it would be. I know all my friends and everybody just I've seen around the schools doing such a great job wearing their mask all day. For me, it's just picking a good mask to wear, but yeah.
Viola, what about you? What are, what can you say about maybe, talk to us about your asynchronous days?
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that? My sound was a little bad.
Oh, no worries. I just wanted to hear a little bit about your asynchronous days. I know a couple of you mentioned or reference them. What are you doing on those days? Tell us a little bit about that.
So for my asynchronous days, it's more of a combination of like my teachers posting things on Google Classroom, AP Classroom, and Moodle, pretty much whatever platform they like to use. And I personally really enjoy the asynchronous days because it gives me a chance to like catch up on my assignments and do my asynchronous work like at my own pace. But it's also nice that we get the in-person instruction prior to doing the asynchronous assignments.
Do any of my colleagues on the board have any questions for these three individuals? Okay, Mr. Zabett has a couple of questions.
And I don't know who to ask this, but are you okay with the schedule the way that it is now when you're in school? I think you have like three, is it three subjects a day now instead of the normal six? How is that going?
Personally, I really like it because it gives a lot of structure to my day, just going to three hours. And I feel like I get a lot more done while I'm in class. And personally, the in-person learning makes it a lot easier for me to focus while like learning. For example, I'm in pre-calculus, so doing my math notes in class is definitely a lot easier than doing them online. So personally, I do like the hour and 40-minute classes.
Sudan or Viola, do you want to chime in?
Personally, I also do enjoy this, especially in my Spanish class. It's given us a greater opportunity to practice, which I personally enjoy a lot.
I agree. In my AP Biology class today, we actually got to do our first like hands-on lab. We all got to sit at our desk and then we got the materials passed out to us. So we got to do a lab like sitting at our desk, still socially distanced, and that was really fun.
Thank you. It's great to hear.
Thanks for being here. Just, I guess I'm curious with the hybrid that we have going on now. And how do you feel that, do you feel we're covering as much material as you have in past years? Are you able to get that coverage during the asynchronous days?
I would say so. With the opportunity of being at home, it's actually taught me how to like study a lot better because on the asynchronous days, we have like less guidance from our teachers. So I've developed a lot of new like strategies of time management.
Yeah, I agree with hybrid, especially for my like core four classes that I take currently. It works out really great. And with the hybrid, it also works out with our student government. We kind of broke it up into cohorts. So we get a lot of work done actually and we zoom in sometimes during class for our student council and it's been a pretty flawless transition from going from remote to hybrid.
I would have to agree, though. I think that there are moments where I wish there was the more than one opportunity to go in person. I personally think that with the workload of APs, it's helpful to get guidance from teachers. But I do understand that given the circumstances, that's not possible and we do have access to office hours.
Thank you.
Another question from Mr. Muska.
Button. All right, team, there we go. Thanks for bearing with me there. All right, so my question is, and any of you just chime in as you see fit. But we all know that things can be challenging at times because you're going through a non-traditional school year, am I right? So with that being said, what would you say is maybe the thing that you found to be maybe the most challenging? But what have you learned from it? What do you think you'll take away through maybe some of the adversity of the change that you've had to deal with so far this year? I'm curious your take on that.
I think the hardest thing for me this year, being a senior, is trying to apply to colleges while keeping up with schoolwork. And one thing I've definitely learned from that is trying not to procrastinate. I applied to my like top three schools in the beginning of the summer and instead of waiting to do them, and that has definitely helped me with the asynchronous workload, completing those at the beginning of the college application process instead of trying to do them now. So it's definitely helped me to get on things faster and to not procrastinate.
I do agree with the balance. I think that with me, I did have an issue with procrastinating time management. But with this, as I'm not sure if it was Viola or Sophia, but with the balance of asynchronous and synchronous and in-person, we have to manage ourselves more independent and with that, we get a sense of more ability to sustain our own individual and yeah.
Thanks so much. Anyone else? Andrea.
Thank you, guys, for letting us put you on the spot like this. You know, it's been a while since we've got to interact this way with students. I know we see you guys other ways and talk to families and things like that. But I would love to know, you know, I do this thing with my son where I say best and worst and it's a quick thing and your parents probably do the same thing. So we've heard the best and, you know, you guys are obviously, you know, really dedicated and want to get the most out of this education experience, no matter what the circumstance. Can you guys tell us a little bit, you know, what are your fellow classmates struggling with? What are ways that you're hearing them struggle and this, you know, there's no wrong answer. So, but you know, we want to hear the good, but we also really want to hear where you might hear your friends saying, you know, that they're struggling. You know, we know you're going to make the best of it, like Mr. Muska said, but I'd love to hear from each one of you, you know, where those struggles are, whether you can help them or not and whether we can control them or not, given our current pandemic and everything else. But I'd like to hear what, whether it's you personally or things you're hearing from classmates.
For starters, I think a big issue that many students, including myself, was the wake-up time, trying to get back in the habit of waking up at 6:30, get to school. But aside from that point, I think it's, they miss the socialization aspect of it in only having half of the school population. But other than that, I've not really heard many complaints.
For like me personally and like all of my friends, it's not a complaint that like we can do anything about, but just the fact that this year isn't normal. We don't get a normal homecoming or a normal football season where we can all go watch and pack the student section or we can go to any game that we want. It's kind of really different because you usually get that aspect of the, you know, what we always talk about, tradition, culture, achievement. And it's hard to go to school sometimes and just kind of just go to Rochester and just for school, not for the sporting events and the homecoming. And it's difficult finding ways to just entertain the students with other aspects besides just school.
Kind of a general complaint that I've heard is kind of like, I've seen both sides of it really because for student council, whenever we like put on events such as like fundraising, we always try and give out certain incentives and we're not able to do a lot of those incentives at the moment to like inspire people to get involved. Like for our Can Drive, one of our biggest incentives is usually off-campus lunch, which of course cannot happen at this time. So that's kind of a general thing. We can't really like encourage people to do our events like as much as we could in the past.
Kevin, I don't want to forget about you. You're on Zoom. We still see you. Do you have any questions or comments?
Well, hearing, thank you, Kristin, and thank you, guys, for your candor, for one thing, and for your amazing leadership also. And hearing what you guys were just, the way that you're approaching all this is, well, it's humbling, to be honest with you. I mean, every single year, we count on our seniors to lead the way in so many ways and to set the bar high. You know, the standards you guys are setting through all this adversity and your approach and your attitudes and the way you're making it happen. It's a model to all of us adults. So thank you, thank you so much for all of that. You are setting, your standards are on steroids. It's, it really is humbling. Congratulations in advance of all the incredible things you're going to continue to do and thank you for your leadership.
Yeah, I'll echo what Kevin has to say and thank you again. You know, we put you on the spot. We don't normally do this. We don't normally ask you 20 questions after you give your reports. Normally, you're in and out, so we appreciate your time and for giving your perspective. You really are why all of us are here and why we do this work. And I want you to know that and I'm not just saying that either. So we appreciate your time and your insight. So thank you. You guys can now get back to your homework. Next item on the agenda. Next, you're welcome. Next item on the agenda is citizens requesting placement on the agenda. These are citizens who have requested to speak via a form on our website and we have two citizens who have requested to speak in this way. And so I believe they're both on Zoom and first I will call on Nina Ignazek. Nina? Yep, we hear you, Nina.
You don't see me, though?
We see your icon. We don't see you.
I don't think I have the option to turn my video on. Okay, well, I guess you'll just listen to me then. My name is Nina Ignazek. I am a parent of a Hart Middle School student and a Stony High School student. I'm speaking tonight to ask the board to consider returning our students to full-time remote as quickly as possible. As I'm sure you're aware, cases are spiking. Michigan broke its record for new cases on Saturday and another 3,800 cases were announced today. Hospitalizations and deaths are also rising quickly. On Sunday, Oakland County reported a seven-day average number of cases per million above 150. That means we have now entered Category E or the highest category of risk as defined by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. According to the Oakland County Health Department's guidelines that you shared at the last meeting, you're advised to consider district-wide remote instruction because of our county risk category and the fact that we have cases in our buildings. because of our county risk category and the fact that we have cases in our buildings and I just found out we're shutting down Rochester High um next, this week. I've already communicated my concerns over how Oakland County is crunching numbers differently for their school reports and I sent that response to be included in the board packet. Um, so I'm dismayed to see that it was not included in that packet. I know you are relying on Oakland County to back you up and making what for, what for money is a very unpopular decision. But you know that the Oakland County report for schools is lagging and undercounts the numbers. Timing is critical and you need to act now. I know I speak for many, many parents who do not agree with this attempt to return to in-person learning at this time. And on behalf of them, I implore you to return us to remote learning to preserve the health and safety of our community as we navigate this second wave. This will all be over someday and there will be a time after a vaccine is available and distributed and after numbers come back down and stay down, when I look forward to my students having a normal school life. I know there is a loud contingent of parents who disagree with me vehemently and have applied a great deal of pressure to you to reopen the schools. These parents tell me two things. Number one, that we had the virtual campus option and so we should not complain. To them and to you, I say, I don't know how or why Rochester decided that offering one hour of in-person instruction per day to secondary students would be a sufficient substitute for engagement with teachers and students at their homeschool. Maybe it was meant to solve some other problem. I don't know. I know it was already in the works, but it is not a solution to this problem and it is a second-rate option for our kids. Number two, they tell me that deaths are low and the risk to children is next to nothing. In response, I say the epidemic is changing. We saw a 17% increase in hospitalizations in southeast Michigan over the weekend. Oakland County's positivity rate is increasing and is now more than 6%. We've seen a doubling of the average death rate over the past two weeks. The risk to our teachers is not nothing. The risk to older parents and grandparents is not nothing. People are still dying from this virus. I have an uncle who is fighting for his life at Hennepin Hospital right now on a ventilator and my aunt is also hospitalized. Please do the right thing and return our students to the stability and increase instruction time of remote learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. We also have uh next Grace Vargis. I believe on Zoom. Grace, if you're there, go ahead and unmute yourself. There you are, Grace.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you.
All right. My name is Grace Vargis and I'm currently an 11th grader at Rochester High School. You may remember me from the last forum meeting when I asked RCS to stay remote until it was safe to go back. That was about a month ago. Cases now are skyrocketing through the roof. RHS shut down tonight because we had COVID cases. There are currently so many cases in the district, but you guys are adamant about sticking with this hybrid plan. The hybrid plan is a failure. We still have plenty of cases in the district from the short amount of time we were open for. Now would be a great time to go back to remote learning. We should wait until cases are very low. You guys still haven't acknowledged the issue of students lying on their health questionnaire coming to school even if they are sick. There are certain parents who are sending their kids in anyways, even if they're sick, so schools will stay open. I also want to know why there isn't proper reporting of cases on the, um, on the district page. There are many more cases are, that, there are many more cases than what is shown. I take my education very seriously. If we continue with the hybrid plan, it's only going to inconsistently switch back and forth between hybrid and remote, which will take instructional time away from students. Teachers are overwhelmed from all the work being given out. For a district that seem to be very big on mental health, it seems as if you guys don't really care. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Grace. Next item on the agenda is communications for Board of Education members. Do any of my colleagues have any communications to share? Michelle.
Um, I received three from prior or be, since the last meeting. Marvin Putras, Don Gramato and Carrie Conley.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is PTA Council update. I believe is Jennifer Wilson uh on Zoom, I believe, to give this update.
Jennifer, I think you're muted.
You know what, Jennifer, if you are there, we don't see you on Zoom, um, we can always come back to you at the end if you do end up joining. Next item on the agenda is item five, our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any member of the board or any citizen requests discussion of that, an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will become the first item of business under the new business portion of the agenda. Item A, current bills payable for September 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2020. Item B, Board of Education regular meeting minutes for September 14th, 2020. Item C, Board of Education work session minutes for September 28th, 2020. Item D, Board of Education special meeting minutes for September 28th, 2020. Would any board member like to remove an item for discussion? Or would any member of the public like to remove an item for discussion? Seeing none, uh, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Moved by Barb, seconded by Andrea. All those in favor, please say aye. That is a seven zero vote. I saw Kevin's vote there. Next item on the agenda is reports. Item A is Superintendent Committee Reports. This is an informational item only and I guess we'll start with Dr. Shaner.
Thank you, Madam President. On October the 7th, the Superintendent Steering Committee met. Uh, we discussed uh the condition of a number of our current buses that have some structural problems and the method to remedy that and acquire new buses through leasing and purchasing. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think we have Matt McDaniel on Zoom who can tell us about the October 13th SBOC meeting.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Yeah, the Superintendent's Business and Operations Committee met on October 13th. Uh, we discussed the progress of the audit as well as the budget amendment, the status of transportation operations, August financial results, Board of Education meeting format and an inter-local agreement with Oakland County. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks for being here. Uh, next up is Beth Davis to talk about the Superintendent's Policy and Curriculum Committee.
Thank you. The Superintendent's Policy and Curriculum Committee met on October 13th and it discussed of the buses and the condition of the buses as well as busing, the inter-local agreement with Oakland County, uh, the budget projections and budget amendment and the format of Board of Education meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Thanks for being here. Item B under uh reports is an Equity and Inclusion Update. This is an informational item. Debbie Fragomeni.
I'll take this one, Madam President.
Yep, sure.
And again, if, if folks are wondering why our cabinet's sitting in the room and the folks that are presenting, we're trying to uh, to protect uh the density in the room as much as we can. So we're glad that our colleagues could join us online and we're also glad to see our fellow board members and administration here in the room as well as our community. Um, very fortunate to, to continue our work even through the pandemic, which causes everything to more to be more difficult and it requires us to be more deliberate and intentional. And we continue to do that. And I'm going to introduce our interim Director of Equity, Inclusion and Belonging Tiffany Golladay, who many people may uh recognize as a long-term, longtime, very dedicated and very effective teacher, learning consultant, reading recovery coach, and again, now our Director of Equity, Inclusion and Belonging. Tiffany, thank you for being with us.
Thank you so much, Dr. Shaner, and hello, everyone. I'm just going to share a little bit about where we've been and where we're going on this journey of equity, inclusion and belonging. So in 2018, our wonderful district appointed a full-time Executive Director of Instructional Equity to cultivate strong relationships with students, staff and parents and to facilitate unique learning experiences that promote systemic equity, cultural proficiency and inclusion. And I am very grateful and proud for Rochester's continued efforts toward this work and for allowing me to continue on this journey. So just a little bit of an overview um of what we've done so far. In 2018, RCS developed a partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools, um, an or, an organization based out of Washington State that works with school districts to ensure equitable access into our AP or Advanced Placement courses for all students, specifically those who have been historically marginalized. We've also collaborated with Oakland Schools to align a three-year cultural proficiency training model for all staff and administrators. This training includes topics around identity, implicit bias, cultural responsive teaching, microaggressions, how to be an anti-racist. We are currently in year three where all buildings are now receiving this training through Train the Trainer model. In addition to this, um, the RCS Students Justice Clubs at each high school have been developed in 2019 and they continue this year as well. So this is where student leaders use a framework to help guide them along, advocate for change through current practices, behaviors and mindsets. This year, the groups are using Tiffany Jewell's book. This book is anti-racist and through this book, students will explore what it means to be an anti-racist and how they can actively work to promote social justice in education and in our world at large. Aside from that, we will continue our wonderful partnerships with many of our community members. For example, Michigan Roundtable, Neighborhood House, the RCS PTA Council, the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Parent Network, Us Squared Consulting, the Center for Trauma Resilient Communities and RIAA, Rochester Area Youth Assistance. So currently we have lots of amazing work that's been happening all around us. This past summer, many of our staff participated in a book study on Robin D'Angelo's book, White Fragility. We've also been having lots of uh webinars and panel discussions for RCS staff and community members and families. Some of those include a 21-day racial equity habit building challenge, a panel discussion on inclusive text, a panel discussion on race, racism and privilege, an interactive workshop on courageous conversations about race as well. And newly forming, we have a brand-new District Equity Committee and using the BELL framework, this committee will work toward creating equity in the following areas. Teaching and learning, school-wide systems and structures, family caregiver and community partnerships, and finally, district and state policies. On November 2nd, I'm really proud to announce that we will be offering a professional development day where staff will participate in a day of social justice training where they will be able to self-select virtual sessions to attend, all centered around diversity, equity and inclusion. Some of the topics this day include microaggressions, equity for students with disabilities and IEPs, racial trauma, inclusion in the curriculum and much more. Following this day's event on November 3rd, every building will be trained in cultural proficiency through that Train the Trainer model as well. So that's just a little bit to let you know that this work is continuing within our district and I'm very proud to be a part of that. So thank you so much.
Board member questions or comments? Barb.
I did have a question. The um, the District Equity Committee, um, what's the makeup of the members?
Every single school building is represented and also our virtual campus. We also have several parents as a part of the committee. And then most importantly, we have about four or five students who are also on the committee. Um, so that was a big, that was a big important part for me, making sure that we're not just talking about the students, but we're talking with the students. Um, and then within the staff, we have several different um facets too. Teachers, um, social workers, we have administrators. So we have a very nice um mix and diverse group that represents lots of stakeholders. So thank you for your question.
Sure. How, how often do you meet?
We haven't met just yet, but we will be meeting once or twice a month through Zoom this year. And the subcommittees within that group may meet a few more times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you for the update, Tiffany. Appreciate you being here.
Yep, thank you.
Um, I'm just gonna, uh, we found Jennifer Wilson from earlier and just because this is so, it's so difficult with the Zoom and the in-person, if we can just um quickly insert the PTA Council report right now, just real quick, Jennifer, if you want to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks for being here, Jennifer.
Thank you so much for getting me on. Uh, my name is Jennifer Wilson and I serve on the Rochester District um PTA Council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to update our school community on PTA happenings. Our board met with the RCS Virtual Campus Administrators earlier this month to discuss PTA in the virtual campus world. We had a great meeting with the three and all agreed to hold off on a virtual PTA for this charter year. For this school calendar year, we decided to form a parent advisory group for the virtual campus at the district PTA level. Building PTA presidents asked around for one volunteer from their virtual group of parents to represent each building. The following schools have a volunteer. University Hills, Delta Kelly, Stony Creek, West, Long Meadow, Meadowbrook, Hamlin, Baldwin, Hart, Brooklands, North Hill and McGregor. If your homeschool is not represented and you wish to get involved in this PTA parent advisory group within the virtual campus, please join your PTA if you haven't already done so and contact your PTA president. We would like to encourage parents in the virtual campus to become PTA members at your home building. We still have virtual parents serving on their home building PTA boards and as committee chairs. Many are just visiting in the virtual campus world, so many want to maintain those ties to their home buildings. In addition, by contributing your donations to your PTA homeschool, the virtual campus will also be gifted with money from each PTA that virtual teachers may use for grants and in other ways. Virtual kids can still participate in PTA reflections, Authors in April and in many other ways. Next, we would like to thank Sydney Lidner and the IT Department for assisting us in setting up PTA Zoom accounts for each school. We would like to remind all students that the PTA Reflections Contest theme this year is I Matter Because. Please look for announcements via email through your home building on that uh PTA um committee. And then lastly, the PTA Steam Committee are asking all high school and middle school kids to record science videos for the elementary STEM plus family event. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Jennifer. I appreciate the partnership of the PTA Council, you and your team. Thank you. Next item is item C, Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan Update. This is an informational item. Dr. Shaner.
Sorry, having a hard time with my mask and my bifocals. Apologize. I'll kick this one off. Thank you. Um, this evening, we'd like to just give you a, a brief overview of uh some things that uh an update on our extended learning plan, how it's going, some things that we're working on. Uh, but I'd like to start out, first of all, just um really again extending gratitude to our staff and to our community. Uh, I think one of the young people that spoke earlier said nothing, none of this is easy. And every time we do something, it's, it's just about a first. Do you think about this board meeting this evening? Think about welcoming our student reps back? Think about how we celebrate a national blue ribbon? Uh, the list goes on and on. Uh, so again, gratitude to everybody involved uh in the, the hope for all of us to, to work through this together as a community and to support each other of full well knowing that uh nothing is optimal right now. Uh, but we're doing our very best to number one, keep each and every person in our community and our school district safe and to uh, to continue those learning opportunities uh for um for our students. Uh, earlier today, if you're not aware of it, we did, uh, we did pause learning at Rochester High School. I just want to clear up a few things that have been said earlier today uh on the board meeting that might have been a little bit miscommunication. I'm going to make sure we're clear about it. Uh, we've paused uh learning at Rochester High School uh due to a number of staff members uh being in, being involved in contact tracing. Uh, in order to do that, we needed to pause learning so we could do accurate contact tracing so we don't uh maximize any exposure. We want to minimize exposure to any, any potential uh infection. So we made the difficult decision today to pause learning for tomorrow and have tomorrow be a remote day, which is not something that is new to us unfortunately, but we've, we've done before. So tomorrow will be a remote day at Rochester High. Uh, we'll make a decision in conjunction with the Oakland County Health Department uh as we continue to work together with them. And uh full well knowing that Thursday right now is our And full well knowing that Thursday right now is our PSAT, which is our national qualifying test for the national merit. So again, none of this is ever easy, and none of it's ever scripted. So we continue to work through that. But let's, let's talk about where we've, where we've been and where we're going. So we could have the next slide, please. We'll have, as always, we'll have a number of our colleagues join us today to take out, to take different parts of this. But I just, one more slide, please. I want to talk a little bit about just the situation we're in. And this is a timeline. This is, this is really for folks at home, if you're, you're not aware of the work that's been done. And again, the compressed timeline that we've, we've done this work through. And think about this in the context of June 30th, we expected to be in Phase 5 on July 4th. It is now late October, and our, as has been stated earlier, the number of cases is going up. We're still in Phase 4, and we continue to fight the virus and move through in a hybrid situation. And when we, when we moved into a hybrid, remember, we were expecting cases to continue to either level off or go down, and unfortunately, that hasn't happened. The reason I bring this up again is this is ever, an ever-changing environment. And because if we're, if we're honest about it, we've all been traumatized by it, it's all a negative and adverse experience. We have to remember, remind ourselves that the anxiety causes us to have time move on in our head actually quicker than it actually is. I think I'm gonna start calling that COVID years. And I'll give you an example. One of the young people that spoke earlier today talked about the hybrid and how long we're gonna be in the hybrid. And remember, when we talked about it at our last board meeting, we said the hybrid was a temporary move to phase into full face-to-face instruction. Never in a million years that I think that we'd be seeing a change like we did as quickly as we did. I guess we would anticipate that, but not, not at the time of the science. And the only reason I, I mention that is because sometimes when we're talking about, about the crisis, we think back in retrospect, and we think, well, we should have done this, or we could have done that. And we also have to remind ourselves of the conditions on the ground at the time. I akin this to my, to my experience in, in the Marine Corps, and when I, when I spent time in Somalia. You always had to remind yourself of what had happened in three or four days prior that would led up to the decision you're making at the time, because the context changed. The context changed so quickly, you, you really had to take the time, take the time to process it. So we share this timeline with you, just, just to acknowledge the work that's been done, the work that continues. And let's talk a little bit about our current state in terms of the virus. So we could have the next, the next slide. We continue, as someone mentioned earlier, to look at the Oakland County data. And as Mr. Zabit so, so expertly did over the weekend, looked at that data and checked the data of this county versus the state. And we do understand there's a lag. I don't think in the way the, the size of the sample at the state level and the size of the disaggregated level at the county, there's any better way to do it. But we'll continue to work with those, those agencies to do that. But the number of cases are up, they're up dramatically. We're watching this closely. We've had a number of meetings through the weekend and one this morning with the Oakland County Health Division and other area superintendents about, talking about how we forge our way forward. So again, I would ask the community to re, to remain fluid and flexible. I know some folks don't like using those words. I certainly don't. I don't like hearing them, that's for sure. But we're running out of vocabulary to describe this, whether it's complex, dynamic, fluid, flexible, so on and so forth. So again, a number of cases, suffice it to say, are up. We are currently in Category C, and I believe the person that spoke earlier is correct that we are moving quickly towards Category D. And then we'll keep, we will keep the, the board and the community apprised of that. I have another meeting Wednesday morning and another meeting Thursday to discuss this with all the superintendents in the county and the Oakland County Health Division. And we continue to speak with them, with our school nurse in real time. So we'll make decisions in real time in order to keep our students and our staff safe, and he will, in order to keep some type of continuity of learning if, if need be. Please don't walk away from this, this meeting thinking, yes, we're gonna stay hybrid, or no, we're gonna go full face-to-face, or oh, no, there he said it, we're going back to remote. The answer to that question remains to be seen at this point. We'll continue to work with our public health experts. We'll continue to monitor the cases, the, the capacity for hospitals, and, and every other piece of this data that, that helps impact our decision-making. So just a little bit of an overview in terms of what's going on with the virus. Next slide, please. If you've been watching this, again, this is the Oakland County report as of October 20th. And you can notice that the, the red arrows are the ones that are pointing in the wrong direction. And if you're wondering how we get from one level to the other, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services uses two factors. The cases per million or the percent positive, although they will tell you that the cases per million is a much stronger indicator than the percent positivity, because the percent positivity is a function of how many people are being tested. And in the case, when you look at both factors, the Department of Health and Human Services asks you to take the higher number. And in this case, as you know, that is the cases per million. Thank you. And here's the matrix again that we're going by, and we continue to work with our colleagues at the Oakland County Health Division. So again, we're in Category C. I anticipate that this is gonna change, and change rather rapidly. And we will keep our community and the board apprised of that if that happens and when it happens. Thank you. So I'd like to turn this over to Lori Grine at this point and talk about communications. And it's really important to, to, to think about this in the context of how we work with the Oakland County Health Division, what the processes and procedures we have to go through with them, and then what we're communicating to the public and to the board. Lori, take it away. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Shaner. Good evening, board members. Throughout the pandemic, our COVID-19 communication processes have really continued to evolve to not only meet the needs of our community, but to adhere to state requirements as well. The district notifies our community of reported cases primarily through our school messenger, our website, and our official district's social media sites. The Oakland County Health Department really determines whether or not those cases are reported on our website. So just to, to refresh the board's memory, a Michigan Department of Health and Human Services emergency order was issued that requires school districts to report school-associated cases of COVID-19 within 24 hours after being notified by the local health department. That last part is, is kind of a key there. It's important to note that the data that we report is provided, the data that we report on our website is provided by the Oakland County Health Division. The cases must be school-associated cases where a student or staff member was at school or a school-related event during a contagious period. So what's a contagious period? The contagious period is 48 hours before the onset of symptoms or 48 hours before the test date if they do not have symptoms. We have also listed below the definitions of our required reporting. It is on our website. It talks to probable cases, confirmed cases, and cumulative confirmed school-associated cases. Again, that information is on our website. At this, oh, I'm sorry. There's the slide. I'm, I apologize. I'm working the slide and talking at the same time. So, so there is the slide. It is in your board packet, but I didn't review all of the information for you. Next up, we have Mr. Matt McDaniel.
Thank you, Lori. At this time, I really only have a few updates on the operations and facility side. I want to let everybody know that I think this last time that we gave this presentation, we anticipated that meals served to students would be free of charge through December 31st or until funding ran out. That has now changed that for the entirety of the 2021 school year, all meals served to students for breakfast and lunch will be free. Also, our food service team and Chartwells are continuing to scale up. We'll begin offering food service at the Schultz campus on November 9th, and hot meals shortly here in early November. I also like to note for our virtual students, as well as, since we're not offering in-person instruction on Wednesdays, that Wednesday, food service pickup will be available. On our facility sides, as, as Dr. Shaner mentioned in a, in an email last week, we are beginning to rent out self-contained areas of our facilities, beginning with pool rentals that are available today. We're looking at offering other designated areas in the future, but have no update on, on those future spaces yet. Would also like to note that we understand with, that with these facility rentals that the health screening protocols and cleaning requirements are gonna be very important to ensure that we can continue to operate for our main purpose, which is instruction. So there will be an COVID-19 surcharge that are, will be passed along to renters so that we can ensure that health screening is occurring, that renters are staying in their designated areas, and that we can do some additional cleaning. Also like to note at this time that enrichment program offerings for pools are looking at ramping up as well, and we anticipate an offering to be available in mid-November. That is all the updates on the operations and facility side. I'd like to turn it over to Karen Gilardi, Executive Director of Instructional Practices, K-12.
Matt, just real quick, Karen, if you just let me cut in here, I apologize. But I just want to make sure you said it, but want to reiterate that the only facilities that we're renting out are ones that are not part of our normal instructional days. We're not renting out classrooms or facilities that would, we might normally in, in regular times, per se. So things like pools, where we're not using them from instruction at this point, and we can keep the participants that are renting those facilities cordoned off from the rest of the building.
Thank you, Dr. Shaner.
Do I have that right, Matt?
Yes, that is correct. At, at this point, we're only starting with our three pools at each of the high schools. We haven't yet targeted the next area that we'll begin to offer, but at this time, it's only pools beginning today. And additional cleaning and health screening requirements have to be met to comply with our new rental requirements.
Thank you. So I'm going to present this evening's student participation. As part of our Return to Learn Plan, we are required to, to announce our attendance rates for the month. So for October, Week 1, which is a Tuesday through Wednesday for pupil accounting purposes, we had 97% attendance. Week 2, 98% attendance. Week 3, 98% attendance. We do not have Week 4 yet verified. And the way we are determining attendance for this year is that attendance counts if the student attends a synchronous class session, either in-person or remote. They complete an assignment assigned by the teacher, it is submitted and reviewed and given feedback, or a two-way communication with the certified staff member regarding content that the student is learning in class. Each month, we will present the average weekly attendance.
And Karen, that is, that is our pupil accounting regulations and how they want it done, correct?
Correct. So this is for this year, we have to share out week by week. So to continue with this, we're gonna turn over to Mr. Morando to talk about asynchronous learning.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to discuss asynchronous learning. First, I would like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Shaner, and the RCS community for your continued support. I would also like to thank all of the RCS staff. Shifts have happened throughout the year, and our staff have done great adapting and shifting their practice to meet the needs of our students. As we discuss asynchronous learning, we are always looking for ways to improve and deepen, deepen the level of learning for all students. So just a brief definition of asynchronous learning. It's materials that are provided by the teacher, and requirements are satisfied by the student at their own pace using an independent, flexible schedule. Continues to evolve to deepen learning. Staff is collaboratively working together to ensure there is a continuation of learning. While we have been in a hybrid model for just over two weeks now, asynchronous learning is relatively new and a shift in practice. We are always looking for ways to improve our synchronous and asynchronous learn, instruction to best meet the needs of our students. Currently, we are utilizing the Teachers College videos for reading and writing instruction and everyday math online tools. Our district has purchased the Pioneer Valley resource for all 13 elementary schools. Pioneer Valley is another literacy resource our staff will be able to utilize for guided and recorded lessons with many high-interest books for students to read remotely. These high-interest books are leveled books with a range of genres. Within these resources, we are, are looking for ways to, and opportunities to enhance learning for all students. Here are just a few examples of asynchronous learning, and then, after I'm done sharing, we'll have a representative from each level share their experiences. Elementary prerecorded videos and read-alouds, online discussion boards, self-guided learning modules, independent offline reading, journaling and home links, secondary, just to name the few. Readings or videos that support synchronous sessions, writing, small group work via Zoom or Google Meet, online lab simulations, practice or skill-building, participation in online classroom forums, and more. So planning and goals moving forward. Our professional learning time next week will be devoted to collaboratively working on asynchronous learning and ways to enhance our instruction. During this time, exemplars will be highlighted for staff at the building and district level. Along with the upcoming professional learning, we have added one synchronous instructional coach position. The objective of this coach is to support students with IEPs who are unable to attend in-person instruction, and virtual campus was deemed as not the best placement for that child. As we work as a team within our community, please reach out to your child's teacher if you have concerns or questions regarding asynchronous learning. So now, just to give a quick glance into the elementary asynchronous learning, I would like to invite Ms. Melinda Young, a Baldwin teacher, to share her experience.
Good evening. I want to start by saying thank you for having me here today. I'm here to help you step inside the shoes of a teacher to see what planning for asynchronous learning looks like. In our current hybrid model, students have two days of in-person learning and two days of learning at home, asynchronous learning. By beginning the year in the remote learning environment, I was able to put many structures and routines in place. These routines have made the transition into hybrid learning very smooth. Students utilize Google Classroom to access their slides or assignments for the day while they are learning at home. The most important thing for me is that students at home are given an easy-to-follow routine that builds on the learning that is taking place in the classroom. In planning for learning at home, as I like to call it, I meet with my team to plan what lessons will be covered during the week. Use the guidelines set forth by the district to make sure that we're staying on pace with other buildings in the virtual academy. The asynchronous learning is a continuation of the learning we have done in the classroom. The Teachers College reading and writing project videos are utilized for reading and writing instruction. These videos are extremely helpful and a great asset for asynchronous instruction. Math, science, and social studies lessons are taught through a combination of strategies. These can include making videos, listening to books, and completing learning activities. Students can also utilize the Everyday Math website to support the lap, math lessons being covered. This is truly a collaborative process. Not only do I meet with teachers from my team, but I also reach out to other colleagues to see what they are doing and to explore new avenues for engaging students at home. At the elementary level, especially K through 2, students still need adult support throughout their asynchronous days. They'll need guidance in completing lessons, checking their schedules. It truly is a collaboration between parents and teachers. I also want to acknowledge the time this process takes. On Wednesday afternoon, elementary teachers are given the bulk of their planning time. Having this uninterrupted time is very helpful when planning. It allows me to dive in and really focus on my plans. In addition to this, I typically spend four to eight hours of my weekend finishing up my plans and posting everything in Google Classroom. The process is one that takes both time and a support network of colleagues. As a teacher, I am working each week to make sure the instruction students receive in school and at home is the best it can be. I'll continue to strive towards our district motto of pride and excellence. Thank you for allowing me to share my experience.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. We also have a representative from the secondary level, Mrs. Rapp. If you could please share some of your experiences, we greatly appreciate it. we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Morando. Lori, do we have the slide deck available?
It's up soon.
Susan? Um, yeah, do it. I think we're okay. I was on a slide prior to that, but that's okay. Good evening. I'm Susan Rapp, the Secondary Math Curriculum Consultant and Teacher at Adams High School. The curriculum consultants are working with our teacher leaders to help all teachers learn about best practices for teaching in all mode of learning, including the asynchronous learning. This is something new for all of us. So this is a big focus of what we've been working on, and we will be working on this during our professional development time next week on November 2nd. So on this particular slide, you'll see some examples of different types of lessons that we are encouraging teachers to use to actively engage students while learning at home. As you can see, there are a variety of lessons to be used in many different content areas. So we are working with teachers to learn how to use software applications also, such as NearPod, Pairdeck, Decimals, and others, to provide multiple avenues for engaging our learners. Next slide, please. This is an example which provides new information through videos, including many that are made by our own RCS teachers. Often, these are accompanied by a student reflection, which asks students to discuss main ideas, make connections to other content, and provide an avenue for them to indicate questions that they have about the topic. On the bottom portion of the screen, this is a page in a slide deck exploring parabolas. Don't panic, I'm not going to ask you to do the math tonight. Normally, I would, but I'll give you a break tonight. This slide provides not only a definition, but the dots are movable points allowing students to explore the interactions between key characteristics of the parabola. On the right side, you'll see a box, and this is a place for students to be able to answer a question and provide feedback to teachers on what they observe. So this is one of many ways teachers are working to provide meaningful asynchronous learning for our students. Thank you for having me this evening.
All right, next, if we could have Mr. Todd from Adams. How are you, Todd?
Hi, Marco, thank you so much. Thank you, Board of Education, Dr. Shaner, members of Cabinet on Zoom for allowing me to talk a little bit about a committee that was formed recently, Live Distance Learning Committee. It was formed on October 5th. This committee consists of teachers, administrators, and parents from all levels. We currently have about four or five secondary teachers, an administrator from an elementary building, an administrator from a middle school and a high school building, as well as parents who represent all three levels as well, all the way from K through 12, as well as a teacher who works in the IA, who had some interesting information to provide because of some of her experiences with utilizing some distance learning platforms and goals. So the overall goal of this committee is to study and review live distance learning options for RCS and to meet the needs of all learners using the hybrid learning model and then beyond as well. So tonight, what I'd like to do is just to give you a little bit of an overview of the first few meetings that we've had, as well as to kind of touch on how asynchronous learning kind of enters our conversation in this committee, as well to kind of talk about a visit that we did do to a neighboring district to observe, and then some next steps. So the first few meetings were based solely off of what's out there. We asked the question of what's happening in neighboring districts? What's happening around us? You know, what do we know is available? When we consider actually possibly having cameras in classroom or utilizing technology in a classroom to meet the needs of students that are in front of the teachers in person, as well as either at home in asynchronous, or even possibly at home because of being ill or being quarantined, or for whatever reason, a student may not make it into the building. The information kind of, after talking about that, led to a couple of different things that are prevalent in a lot of districts. We talked about zooming classrooms versus live streaming. Just to give you a breakdown of kind of how we define those two things, zooming classrooms is more of an interactive type environment where students at home are zooming, and students in the classroom are part of that zoom as well. This is a model that allows, in some ways, for students to be interactive within the actual class of being in person versus a live stream, which would be more of a consideration of essentially a stable camera mounted somewhere in a classroom where students would be able to just watch and view and see what's happening in the classroom. We talked a great deal about benefits and barriers to the models that are out there. I say, I'm going to say perceived benefits and perceived barriers because this was information that came during our committee discussion. It is not information that has been shared with us from other districts, as any other district in the area are at a very early stage of utilizing these models. Some of the perceived benefits include exposure to content, teachers seeing all students at once. It's a structured day for students, even if they're at home, and then students would continue to have a connection to their homeschool. Some of the perceived barriers would be little to no collaboration time between students, creating lecture-heavy environments, student privacy issues, magnification of behavior issues that would occur in a class. Teachers and students can be limited by these environments because a class could be separated into two environments, and then an overall decrease in the quality of instruction when one class is split essentially into two environments. And most of this information came up in discussion within the committee. It was information that was gathered from colleagues in other districts through teacher leaders across the OAA as well. So the asynchronous discussion kind of comes up in our committee meetings quite a bit as well. After we had a conversation about essentially cameras in classrooms, we kind of moved on and said, if we're not going to use cameras in classrooms, then what can we do? Our committee then has discussed and will continue to study what we are doing to continuously improve this environment and how technology can and is helping. Mrs. Rapp, Mrs. Young gave a couple of great examples of the things that are happening asynchronously. I had a couple that came up in our discussions. We have some students across, or excuse me, teachers across the district that are using a software called Loom. It's an L-O-O-M, not Zoom. It's a software that's a Chrome browser that easily records a teacher's screen and voice during a presentation or a lecture-style-type lesson. That software then creates a link to share with either asynchronous students or any students that are unable to attend. Some teachers have found success utilizing this platform early, and they're continuing to learn and continuing to educate others or starting to educate others around them. There's a lot of students at the secondary level, and I know the elementary level, that are flipping classrooms. This involves the use of recorded lectures that can be shared and utilized by all students. If a student is then watching a recorded lecture, a teacher can then focus on the individuals that are, when they're in person, to have the ability to work on materials with the teacher present. The teacher can then focus on them and where they are with concepts, and can utilize on-the-spot formative assessments to teach and reteach what the student actually needs. I'd also like you to keep in mind that like the secondary level has, this is, today was our first day back, or excuse me, our first, our second day back, our second week. So teachers are starting to get used to some of these asynchronous things that they're doing in the classroom, but we are early on in this process for high school. What we know from our discussion in these meetings is that none of these things truly mimic what we know to be true. We know that a student who is able to work with other students in a collaborative nature, a student who is in front of a skilled and caring teacher, will learn material at a deeper level. A small group from the committee did have an opportunity to visit a neighboring district. Before I kind of talk about some of the things that were observed, I would like to make sure that everyone is considering that the other district that was visited is utilizing a distance learning model for a very short time, and they're currently not at capacity K through 12. There's not a lot of data to make informed decisions about whether what they're doing is working, that what air quote is working. But also, it's important to note that our RCS families, and then the families of surrounding districts, have all had a myriad of different choices. And so simply comparing what neighboring districts are doing out of full context is quite difficult. But while we had the opportunity to visit this district, we had the pleasure to talk with administrators, with teachers at both the middle school and the elementary level. We were able to watch a few classes and lessons and see how teachers were interacting with students. This particular district furnished each classroom with multiple pieces of technology as their plan was to utilize this model instead of offering other choices. We had a great experience going through and seeing, it was great to see kids in classrooms, but going through and seeing how teachers, different teachers at different levels are utilizing their technology to meet the needs of their learners. Next steps for us, the committee will continue to meet. The next meeting discussion is going to surround the recent visit, what was observed and what we learned, and what were, what our takeaways were. We also plan to discuss best practices that have been in place in the hybrid model since RCS started in elementary just over two and a half weeks ago, and middle school two weeks ago, and then high school this past week. We'll ask the question, what are we doing that is working? And what ideas we have to continuously improve? We are committed to and invested in exploring all opportunities to best serve our students. We will collect feedback from teachers and feedback from our students to help us on our continuous improvement. One thing I have learned through all of this, we are all doing the absolute best we can to teach our students. The districts around us are doing their absolute best to serve their students, and we will continue to focus on the quality of our instruction and the quality that our students are receiving. Thank you. I believe next up is Ms. Consetta Lewis with a special education update.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Our continued emphasis during this time is to certainly maintain the integrity of the IEP documents for our students. We want to make certain that what we have documented as their need continues to be that while we convene IEPs. So we're continuing to hold IEP meetings, convene IEP teams, and we write those IEPs as if we are back to full in-person instruction, and that is the guidance that we have been given from the Michigan Department of Education along with the US Department of Education. So the dress, the current state that we're in is that students have what's called a contingency learning plan. And there are essentially several things that might trigger a student having a contingency learning plan for this school year. One of them might be if a school building has to close and students are not able to attend the building, then we have a contingency learning plan about how we will continue to provide support services for students. While we are in the hybrid model, although we are back to in-person instruction, we're still not back to our full continuum of support that we offer. So students would continue to have a contingency learning plan. And those plans are updated approximately every 30 days. We're revising, seeing, you know, is this plan working for this student and this family? Do we need to make any adjustments? Have we changed our overall learning model, and we need to adjust the plan? So when we started in remote learning, students had contingency plans for remote learning. Once we came back to buildings, we've been making adjustments to those plans based on the support that students are currently getting and the amount of time that they are able to be serviced. What we do know is that, again, we're working to maintain the integrity of the IEP process, but because we are not back to full five days of in-person instruction, it's likely that students might not, the service that they're getting may not look exactly like what's written in the IEP. And again, that's where that contingency learning plan comes into play. And we work in collaboration with parents to develop what these plans are for students, and each student's plan might look really different. And this speaks to the next point where we talked about individual solutions to meet the needs of students. You heard Marco talk about at the elementary level, we have that synchronous instructional coach for students where perhaps the virtual campus is not necessarily the best option for them to learn. We wanted to make sure that they continue to have the appropriate support. So we've done some stretching in how we are able to support students as we move through this pandemic. At the secondary level, we have some students that have entered the virtual campus but needed some additional support. So they have essentially what we've called a blended model where they have their core academic classes through the virtual campus, but they're still receiving that special education support that's specialized to their needs, that resource support in a remote way. We also have some students that might be, even though the majority of our students are attending in-person instruction just two days a week, there are some students that are attending four days a week. Students at our Adult Transition Program are attending five days a week. So we are really working to meet the needs of individual students where they are, even in the midst of this pandemic. And as we do that, we continue our scaling up process. So the majority of what our students at our Adult Transition Program do is outside of the school building in the community. So we are working to safely begin to provide those students with some opportunities for, to continue their learning in the community. We are scaling up, looking at bringing back some of our three-to-five-year-old students for those talk-and-listen classes, where they come together in smaller groups, and this is different than our early childhood classes. They've already come back to buildings. So we are continuing to work through this process and develop our plans and revise our plan as necessary based on our student needs, as well as the current circumstances of the health conditions within our community. So we're balancing those two, working to ensure that we're doing the best that we can to ensure that all of our students are having needs met as best as possible. And that is all that I have. I think Cindy is next.
Hi, everyone. Cindy Lindner with Rochester Community Schools Technology Services here. We have some very exciting news for you. We have started to receive our Chromebooks for our one-to-one student initiative. We're going to use the Schultz Center as our base camp, and I've already heard that there's some incredible projects going on. We've had involvement from our Special Education Paraeducators, our ATPS students, and they're even recycling the boxes for a Makerspace project. So I'm going to turn this over to Jeff Frankoviac. He is the principal of our Rochester Community Schools Virtual Campus, and he is on the scene.
Thank you, Cindy. We're coming at you from the Schultz Campus where the deployment and the unpacking is already underway. Let's go take a look on inside. Brief cameo from our virtual campus administration team. All right, come on in. And you're going to see all the wonderful people who've been stepping up as we've been unpacking. Check it out. Thousands of Chromebooks have already been delivered and we've been unpacking over here. Even more impressive is we've been able to repurpose, and we use several of the boxes that is giving, that were a Makerspace project. So please stay tuned, and we'll tell you a little bit more about that. This has been a big undertaking of many people in Rochester Community Schools. And to tell us a little bit about it, hey, Janay, how about you share with us how the ATPS students have fit in with this program?
Thanks, Jeff. Hi, my name is Janay Hayes, and I am the supervisor of the Adult Transition Program here at the Schultz Campus. The call for help came, and we were happy to answer. Our Special Education Paraeducators dove right in to offer support by unpacking almost 5,000 Chromebooks so far. Our ATPS students were able to partner with our friends at the virtual campus by assembling almost 2,000 Makerspace kits, which will be distributed soon.
Thanks, Janay. Your ATPS students and all the team involved have made these amazing Makerspace boxes which are going to benefit a lot of students in the district. To hear more about the deployment, though, let's turn it over to Chris Rowe. Chris, what do you have for us?
Thanks, Jeff, and hi, RCS community. We're in the midst of receiving our Chromebooks for our one-to-one deployment. We have started unboxing and rolling all of our devices, and we're in the midst of planning out our deployments in the next coming days.
Thank you so much, Chris. As you can see, tremendous teamwork has been involved. Thank you so much, and back to you, Cindy.
Wow, there is a lot of incredible work happening over at the Schultz Center. Jeff and Janay, thank you for your creativity and your leadership. A big thanks to Carol Hill, Chris Rowe, and Kathy Evans for their coordination of the device deployment project. And a thanks to all the staff at the Schultz Center. We have our Special Education Paraeducators, our ATPS students, administrators, secretaries, our technology team, volunteers. So many people are coming together to support this priority initiative. It's really, really great work happening. So we have a lot more left to do to be ready for deployment, but stay tuned. We will get more information out to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy, and thanks to the entire team. I hope that gave the board and the community a little bit of an overview of what we've been working in and how we're moving forward. And it is always, always inspirational. We'll see our students over at ATPS pitching into helping make those Makerspace kits. And again, a big thanks to our staff at Schultz, particularly our para pros and the volunteers for doing all the amazing work they're doing. With that, we'd love to entertain any questions the board might have.
Questions? Mike?
Yeah, so I guess I had a question, but I guess Todd kind of answered my question. I had, I had questions about, you know, why can't, you know, the question really is, why can't we just zoom our classes to the people that are at home? And I appreciate the committee's work on this. I appreciate that they're taking a very intentional and reflective process to make sure that we really get this right. And, you know, I think Todd said it at the end there. I want to recognize that the staff is doing the very best that they can and in the process figuring out how to do things better for the kids. So thank you for that, and we'll actually be awaiting, you know, more, more information from that committee. Thank you.
Just, just a comment on, just to piggyback on what Mr. Zabett was speaking of. I participated last week on Friday in a community of practice meeting with the superintendents from all of the United States. Dr. Cook Robinson from Oakland Schools asked me to attend. And one of the things that we were talking about is using, using this circumstance to innovate. Is we're all, we all started reacting, right, back in February and March? And how do we move forward and innovate and make sure that our instruction and practice moving forward is even better than it was when we started this, this process? And I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Zabett, because I think as we move forward, we are going to have to figure out how to reinvent and innovate. There is certainly no, no replacement for a caring, loving teacher in front of kids. But I'm anxious to think about how that might leverage our opportunity for our children moving forward and maybe beyond the classroom. So I appreciate the work of the committee. I believe that they're, they're doing a yeoman's job in a very difficult situation. Even having another school district allowing people into their buildings is, is a stretch in the collaboration that's going on around the county with this as we all try to figure it out, whether you're a district that, that has started streaming or a district that's offered multiple choices like we have. So again, I look forward to innovating and leading in this area as we move forward, and I appreciate your comments.
Michelle?
So I know when we talked about this back in September, we, the game plan was sort of that this hybrid would be temporary and that we'd be headed towards full-time in-person, maybe mid-November. However, with the change in numbers, I'm wondering, how are we going to evaluate if we're not able to go back full-time in-person, whether full-time remote is more effective? Or if hybrid is more effective? How are we evaluating that as we make decisions moving forward?
Yeah, I think, and I think I'll ask Debbie and Cory to chime in on this. But again, I just want to remind everyone, we approached this as a phase-up opportunity, and hybrid was never, never a long-term solution, and it won't be, it can't be. Although I just, I do want to remind people, and that was not staged with those young people that spoke about this earlier. They were totally put on the spot. We have to remind ourselves, too, that the experience that we had in school of sitting in a lecture hall potentially, like in my case, I'm not speaking for anybody else, or, or the proverbial talking head is not what our kids were experiencing in the first place, even before the pandemic started. They were, teachers were using things like Google Chrome. They're using things like Khan Academy. They were, they were videoing their lessons and asking students to watch them later. So I just really think we got to remind ourselves of that. But we also have to continually think about how we're going to improve. And the challenge of this is how do you improve when the environment underneath you is changing rapidly and continuously? And I think that's, that's the evaluation process that's got to take place on a daily basis. So I think as we move forward, if the pandemic continues to ramp up like, like it looks like it's going to, you know, the, the most optimal way to deliver instruction in, in an environment to keep kids safe is, is probably moving back to remote, quite frankly, in terms of quote-unquote instructional hours. And I'll let Debbie and Cory speak to that. But that's not just what we're talking about. Remember, we wanted, we wanted to practice our procedures. We wanted to get our kids back in front of kids and teachers back and, our kids back in front of teachers. And that has all been very successful, and we did that in a context that doesn't exist anymore. So here we go again. We're gonna, we're gonna reinvent ourselves on the fly in an ever-changing context. And Cory, can you just a little bit speak what you've learned about across the county in terms of, not by name, I don't, I don't really want to enter other school districts' names into the record in our, in our public board meeting that doesn't seem ethical. But just kind of some of the things that you've learned across, across the county? And, and then after that, maybe Debbie can talk a little bit about the communities of practice that we have going on in terms of informing our, our practice moving forward and continuously improving. So Cory, can you just speak a little bit to what you've learned across the county?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Shainer. Just real quick, at a glance, as of today, we have, I believe, a total of eight other districts, including ourselves, that have scaled up to a point to include a K-12 model. And within those nine, only three other districts have multiple high schools. If we compare enrollment and just size and scope from, from last year's count, that's been verified, you know, we had almost 15,500 students, and the average of those other districts is just under around 6,400 off the top of my head from when I think of the work that we looked at last week. Other, other things to note, there is no district right now that is back at full capacity. Even if they are not using what they call, you know, what we refer to as a hybrid model to reduce density, other districts made the choice to give families a one-time option to choose a virtual or remote, whatever language they use, but to choose an option that would not require those students to return face-to-face. So depending on how many of those families, K-8, K-5, or all the way, K-12 chose, that is how those districts reduce density. So every district that has scaled up or that is phasing in or that even made the choice to start around the, the beginning of the school year to have students returning to some capacity of face-to-face, we, we don't see anybody in our, in our county cohort doing it at full, full capacity. Other things we've learned is that in terms of our scale up, we moved at a, at a pretty darn quick pace, and we're comparable, if not offering a little bit more face-to-face instruction, particularly at the elementary level of just contact time. So when we, when we do a comparison that way, we're certainly on board, if not exceeding what's available for students in a face-to-face hybrid model or lower-density model. And then on a different note, one of the things that I, that I wanted to add that kind of speaks to Michelle's question a little bit of just kind of where we're at in terms of the unknown and where we're going to be. The, the most amazing thing that I saw is our, especially our youngest learners' transition back in was that the relationships were already established between peers within the classroom, although in a virtual way, and then also between student and teacher. So, you know, when we think of a first day of school, our first in-person day, which took place in October this year, our students knew a lot of their classmates. The angst of not knowing their teacher or what their classroom looked like was gone. And the, the relationships that were established, I think, allow us to really deepen what happens in the face-to-face synchronous environment because we've already taken care of so many of the opening year things. We've already gotten over the worries of what class is going to look like. We've already, you know, established how we may fit or belong within that classroom setting. And the lower density certainly helps that as well. So it's just a quick at a glance on what we've seen at the county level, and then also kind of just my own observations as students have transitioned in. But I'll turn it over to Debbie to see if she has anything to add.
Thank you, Cory, and thank you, and good evening. One of the, the pieces that comes into play with what we're working on is listening to our community. Our, our principals have been very grateful for the phone conversations they've been having, central office as well as the same. We are creatively looking for opportunities to serve the unique needs of what families are facing right now instructionally. We have invited some of our staff members who have taken a leave of absence to return to do some virtual work with our students who may be quarantined or home ill. It's a work in progress, but we're being, as Cory said, as innovative as we can to look for opportunities to meet the unique needs of students. I thought it was very timely that the Board of Education took the time, the additional time, you always take the time, the additional time to talk to our students tonight, our administrators, our counselors, our staff members are taking regular pulses on our students and asking for this feedback and looking for ways to think innovatively and outside the box. We also, as you have seen over the eight months, have formed a COVID task force. We discussed today the need to bring that task force back. This week, with all of the, the ever-changing components, so it's been about two weeks since we have our students back in school. So we will bring more perspective back by bringing that COVID task force back, which includes staff members, administrators, and parents to be able to add some perspective to the voices that are out there. We've also been collaborating very closely with all of our bargaining units to ensure that the instructional practices that are underway are utilized with the resources that are required. We also have staff that are experimenting with different ways to provide differentiated instruction in this environment. And we've always really focused in on differentiating instruction. But under this new environment of hybrid and asynchronous synchronous learning, we are committed to finding more effective ways to help serve the needs of instruction to present to our students. Thank you, Dr. Shainer.
Thank you both. That's the third time's a charm there. And again, just back to Michelle's questions, we'll continue, question, we'll continue to, to evaluate the virus data on a daily basis. Again, I think this week's going to be laden with meetings with the Health Department, the public health officials, and as, as we think about how to move forward and what's the safest, we'll, we'll keep the board apprised of that and make a decision together. But hybrid, just to reiterate, our notion of a hybrid was to phase up to full face-to-face instruction as we've done with many times throughout this pandemic. If we're in a situation where we have to consider hybrid for a longer-term time, we will again, look back, look back again at continuous improvement and how we might alter the structure of that to, to maximize it.
Michelle, go ahead.
Just a little bit of a follow-up. Debbie alluded to it a little bit, but since we do have students that are now quarantining, can you talk a little bit more about how those students are receiving instruction?
Yep, sorry, I was waiting for the hum. Debbie and Cory, can you talk a little bit about, and we've been, we've been hit by a lot more kids isolated and quarantined than we probably expected due to too many things. According to the Health Department, a lot of it is, has nothing to do with school, but they end up in school and we have contacts, and then we have to take the action that the Health Department directs us to. But can you both talk a little bit about what we're doing for students that are in that situation of potentially being either positive or quarantined or isolated or what other the case that the Health Department may ask us to take?
Yeah, so, oh, Debbie, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, please go ahead. You're good.
At the elementary level, we're utilizing that instructional synchronous coach to support students who may be on an extended quarantine or isolation, depending on whatever language the county places on those, those dynamics. That instructional support coach, synchronous instructional support coach is working collaboratively with that classroom teacher, the family and the building principal in providing whatever additional supports may be needed or may be required, number one, due to the length of what we're looking at. And then number two, if there's something that, just based on schedules, cannot be addressed by the assigned classroom teacher. You know, at the elementary level, it's a little bit different just in terms of numbers right now, in terms of, of what we're supporting. And most everything right now has been able to be supported based on conversations between the building principal, that classroom teacher, and the family of finding synchronous times to connect with those students when they would typically be in a synchronous learning environment and make sure that they still have the appropriate materials and appropriate assignments that keep pace. So when they do return, they don't feel as if they are, they're behind. And one of the other benefits that we have seen with the addition of the synchronous instructional coach has been just the collaboration that's happened across our, across our buildings. Our building principals are communicating about what's going on in their buildings and how they can support kids in different neighborhood schools. Our teachers are collaborating. And then we have, with this position, somebody that can kind of play point guard and make sure that we're getting all of the right things in the right places. And then if more is needed, we have that person available to supply that more that may be missing for the student or for the family.
Thank you, Cory. The only piece, and this would apply to secondary as well, but this is one of the conversations that we're having. This is a robust opportunity for us. As you mentioned earlier, Dr. Shainer, when we were looking at bringing our students back and our high school students secondary have been back one week for, for high school and middle school, a little over that time period. This is a robust opportunity for us to look at our students and the number of students that are being quarantined, students who are testing positive, and those students who are out for whatever reason. We're working with our building counselors, our ancillary staff for support, making sure we're making connections. One thing I've noticed from talking with parents that are in these situations when we are calling for any type of notification is what, what does your family need? And we are working on opportunities to make sure that those resources are there. As you could see from our asynchronous teachers this evening, giving just a few examples from their lenses, this is the conversation that we're building in terms of how can we provide rich instruction for families and for students who are unable to come to school? We're at the very beginning of this. I wish I had a more clear-cut answer, but we understand the magnitude of how we need to attend to this. And I have every confidence that the group of people who've presented tonight along with the, the staff that are in the buildings every day are going to have some wonderful opportunities coming forward. We appreciate the partnership with our parents to let us know if additional assistance is needed.
If I, sorry, if I could quickly add on to, this is part of the conversation that's happening in our committee, I mean, every time we meet because, you know, we've steered the conversation towards some of the students who may not have the ability to come to school. One of the things that we've talked to quite a bit for the way that we're set up right now is, is the way that we've bolstered Google Classroom. That was not something that was in place last year at, at all levels and, and all classrooms. It's, it's in all classrooms now. So when I talk to parents and I talk to students, and again, with the committee, right now, the information is on Google Classroom. And then we also have those times in the afternoon, and I, and I've encouraged kids as much as possible to, to, to get into those asynchronous times. If students are home and they can't come to school, even if they weren't in the asynchronous period, I mean, the teachers are still there, they're still available to ask questions, you know, and to continue to utilize emailing teachers and reaching out to teachers. I feel like the basis of that learning for our kids is really the relationships that they've built with their teachers. And so, and so a student, you know, advocating for themselves, teachers recognizing that students are in that position as well, being flexible with the materials and how they're presenting them and how they're receiving them from students.
Other questions? Barb?
So as Mike had mentioned, I, I love the, the intent and the thoughtfulness and the pragmatism of the Distance Learning Committee getting together and giving their due diligence to observing what other schools are doing. But I'm going to play devil's advocate because I know that there are some parents that are, are still frustrated. still frustrated with, you know, why can't, why can't something be livestreamed for that asynchronous learning portion? So I guess my, my devil's advocate question is to Mr. C., you know, or to you, Dr. Shainer, when could we expect a timeline for next steps? And when could we expect that team to bring something forward to us that is tangible in terms of their recommendations?
Sure. Todd, do you, do you really want, do you want to talk about just some of the things? It's like, I don't, I don't know that there's anything that we need to bring to the Board for approval, Barb. I think it's going to be some things that we'll be able to execute. But I want to remind the Board that we're in an ever-changing environment right now and...
Yeah, of course. Keeping, keeping that in mind, of course.
Yeah, and, you know, one thing that, that we often hear is, and it's, it's difficult, right? It's difficult because people don't sit in the seat of a board member or, or an administrator, and I don't expect them to, and quite frankly, maybe they shouldn't even care. But these, these are multiple tasks being done at once, and remember that about our teachers as well. So, you know, I remember when I started teaching, we had a distance learning room at the high school that I taught in, and that was a modality of learning. That was something that we took a year to pilot, where a teacher was in another high school and teaching three different classes in three different high schools, and they had the robotic cameras that went around. It took a year to pilot something like that, and it was a modality of teaching, and still in the research to some degree is considered a modality of teaching, just like a virtual campus is. Quite often, people complain about a virtual campus in terms of it being too independent or not enough contact time with teachers. But a very prominent smaller school district in this county who's made a lot of money, quite frankly, on choice and a virtual academy, based on that, that type of independent learning that people want, because that's a modality of teaching and learning, whether you're a homeschooler and you like that, or whether you just don't want your kid in a, in a school building outside of a pandemic. So what we're asking teachers to do and staff members to do are, are, are look at different modalities of learning and implementing them quickly. So I would suspect that you'll see things like Loom, you'll see things move quite, quite quickly here. You know, necessity is the mother of invention here and the mother of innovation, and I think you'll see this happen pretty quickly. I know people don't like hearing this, but this has happened quickly. Every school district that I talk to, I, I'm on, on multiple meetings with superintendents a week. And someone might see another school district and say, hey, that's the grand panacea, why aren't you doing that? And when you talk to that superintendent, they'll tell you 15 things that their community's upset with them about exactly what someone else is asking you to implement in, in your community. And, and that's, that's not to say we shouldn't do that, it's to say that we have to move forward together in collaboration, because if we don't do that, we're going to have, we're going to have pockets of inequity. We're going to have pockets where there's staff members that don't know how to do it well, and there's going to be pockets of staff members who know how to do it really well, and the kids are going to get caught up in the wash. I feel very strongly that, as, as we started this, we remind ourselves, like I said at the beginning, beginning here, that we've only been doing this for a short period of time in a hybrid, and it was intended to be a short period of time, as we, as we originally intended to get back to full face-to-face instruction. And jeez, I'm still, I'm still super hopeful, I'm always hopeful, but that may not happen, and we're going to have to pivot and consider other options. So as we move forward here, I would expect that this stuff's going to happen pretty quickly, as we collaborate with our, with our colleagues, as we, as Todd moves forward with the committee, I would expect that that's going to happen pretty quickly, and we're going to pilot some of that and stuff and give folks the professional development to do it. I don't think it's not, it's not anything that's going to require Board action at this time, I don't, I don't believe. And I think a big helper in that is getting our one-to-one initiative out, and Cindy Littner's and her team's Herculean effort to, to get those computers here, I might add, almost a month and a half ahead of time than they were supposed to, was significant. So Todd, have I missed anything?
No, I don't believe so. I think the only thing that I would add is, it's not, it's not really that we can't. It, it's, it's really asking the question of where the quality of instruction is and what, you know, what we're doing for our students in the situation that we're in now, and if what we're providing is of a high quality. So I, like, it's, I, I don't think the question is can you or can't you, because we have laptops with, with cameras on them. It's, it's just whether or not we're in a position to provide the same quality of instruction and, and how we're going to do that. And that's, and I think that's one of the biggest conversations we've had in this committee throughout, I mean...
Yeah, and, and what's the best method for, moving forward to do that, to implement that, make sure we can do it as, as equitably and as across the, the organization as we possibly can?
I guess the, the, the point being, you know, just being intentional about what you're doing, and, you know, from an outside observer looking in, you know, it's one of those, I, I, you know, let's hurry up and wait kind of scenarios, right? But we're, we're talking about, you know, instructional models that are impacting our kids' learning. So obviously, I, I want to see a very thoughtful process, which obviously, that is what's happening. I'm just playing the devil's advocate from, say, a parent perspective.
And I appreciate that, because I'm a parent and I see it, I see it in my own home. You know, I think sometimes people forget that we sitting up here, most of us have either had children in school, or in my case, have children in school, and, and I get to see, get to see the experience firsthand, and as many of my colleagues that'll say in education, as board members sitting up here, you have a little bit more of a view behind the curtain per se than, or, or inside the sausage factory. If you know, people, they say the hot dog factory, when you, once you work in one, you don't want to eat them. I don't, I don't feel that's the case here, but I will say that I understand more of what's going on with my own children than, than maybe the average, the average citizen might, because I, I taught in a classroom as an administrator in a building. And, and quite frankly, what goes on inside of a school building, sometimes parents may not be aware of, and I fully understand that, and to be honest with you, I empathize with it. I, I really do. There's nothing, there's nothing in life that you worry about more than your children, whether they're away at college and you wonder what the heck they're doing in a dorm room, or they're 17 years old and they're getting up at seven o'clock in the morning and working on homework till three o'clock in the morning because they aspire to be a doctor, or they're 13 years old and you're worried about how they're getting their socialization because you're not that much worried about their academics, or so on and so forth. Every one of us in this room, every one of us on this call, any, every one of us in this school district can talk about a worry that we have for our children. I, I guess what I want you to know, and I want the community to know, you know, it's quite often this, this word transparency is, is thrown around. And we're being as transparent as we can about the difficulty of the task at hand, how committed we are to it, how committed we are to serving children in a very, very difficult time. And I believe every educator across this county is committed to that. If I didn't believe that, quite frankly, I wouldn't be the leader of this organization. I, I believe people are working as hard as they possibly can. I, I so appreciate that you realize we're trying to be intentional about this. At the same time, for these folks that are sitting, serving on this committee, they're, they're planning for their asynchronous days, they're planning for their, their in-person days, and they're trying to keep their own kids in school and keep them in the right direction and trying to keep themselves healthy and safe. And I, I guess, I, I empathize with everything that you're saying, Barb, and I empathize with, with being a parent. You know, there's nothing, you know, my mother-in-law once said, you never really know worry until, until you have children of your own, and then that's, that's, that's a lifetime, right? I'm 52 years old, my dad's 88, and he's still worried. Tonight I'll drive home and he'll ask me how the board meeting went, and he'll tell me he's worried about me because I'm working too much. I don't, I don't think that changes. So we, we are committed to continue, whether it's, whether it's looking for a platform to do better distance learning in a classroom, or whether it's delivering a better modality of virtual instruction, or whether it's delivering better hybrid content, better asynchronous content, the teachers, the administrators, this organization is committed to getting it right and continuously improving. And it doesn't always look great, because the situation we're in is very difficult. And remember, at the beginning of the meeting, it said, nothing that we do is normal anymore. You can't even walk into McDonald's anymore and have a normal experience of getting a cup of coffee with double cream, double sugar, without going through a different procedure. So we, we are very committed to that. I think the committee's very committed to it, and, and I believe that our educators, once we, once we get to a better place with that, we're not going to stop, we're going to keep going, because we have to innovate. Education at the other side of the pandemic is going to look different.
Oh, for sure.
It's, it, at its core, it is still going to be a relationship, it's still going to be a connection with, between a teacher and students, and staff and students, but the nature of it's going to change, the way we deliver instruction. You heard the young people, they, they've learned how to be more independent, they've learned how to manage their time differently, their wants and needs are going to be different as they move forward, and it's going to be important for us to understand that. Sorry, I've talked a lot, Barb.
I did have one follow-up, and it was just regarding what Mr. C. said about Loom, L-O-O-M, at the secondary level. But is it introduced in the elementary level as well, or not at this point? And I'd love to see what that's like, by the way.
Yeah, we, as we, as we, we move to using it, we'll, we'll definitely bring it back to one of these updates and make sure the Board understands what it is. Todd, can you, is there anything you want to add to that?
It's my, it's my understanding right now that it's being used pretty heavily in, at Hart Middle School and a few other middle schools, and we have teachers that are in the second, or at the high school level that are learning and utilizing. Without going too far into it, it's essentially, it's essentially just, it's just recording a screen. It's not recording video of people, but recording the screen, so it's a lesson that's shared versus like a video in a classroom.
And I feel good that this is a collaborative process. I think it's important that we bring, we bring our team along with it. As we've learned, there's people that are really good and digital natives and able to embrace this, and there's probably people like me that went to Teachers College in 1980-something, and, you know, I was learning Cobalt and Fortran back then, so it's, it would be a little bit more of a challenge. So we've got to, we've got to bring a large organization along very quickly.
Thanks. I think that's a, an appropriate wrap-up for this section at this point, unless there are any other questions for Bob or the team. Appreciate your work on this, and we do know that this is ever-changing, we expect to hear more this week. I want to get on with the rest, with the new business on our agenda right now, and then we will have time for public comments and board member comments and administration comments at the end. Moving on to the new business section, item A is a human resources report, that's an action item. Beth Davis is on Zoom to tell us about that.
Thank you. This evening, we have three REA resignations. Kurt David, school counselor at Hart Middle School, submitted his letter of resignation effective October 2nd. He had been with the district since January of 2020. Michelle Kopp, math teacher at the virtual campus, submitted her letter of resignation effective October 30th, and she had been with the district since October of 2012. And Jamie Peters, resource room teacher at Delta Kelly Elementary, submitted her letter of resignation effective October 15th, 2020. She had been with the district since August of 2018. We have two REA retirements. Beth Bowerman, physical education teacher at Van Hooza Middle School, who submitted her letter of retirement to be effective Jan- January 11th, 2020. She had been, has been with the district since February of 2001. And Annette Faber, school counselor at West Middle School, who submitted her letter of resignation or retirement effective October 1st, 2020. She had been with the district since September of 1989. We have several new hires. Lana Attar, speech and language pathologist. Aliana Boss, speech and language pathologist, district-wide. Laura Cassantino, fifth grade teacher at Hamlin Elementary. Allison Geist, ASD teacher at Meadowbrook Elementary. Brooke Guburn, family consumer science teacher at Stony Creek High School. Sarah Hoover, ECSE teacher at Bruce Baldwin Elementary. Jennifer Nye, school counselor at West Middle School. Ryan Page, psychologist. Eleonora Richardson, cognitively impaired teacher at Delta Kelly Elementary. And Anya Rowe, speech and language pathologist. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the human resources report as presented. Moved by Scott, seconded by Mike. A board discussion or public comment on this, on this item? Seeing none, I will take a vote. All of those in favor of the human resources report, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's a seven-zero vote. Thank you. If we were in person at a meeting in normal times, I would ask if any of those new hires were here so that we could welcome them. If they're watching, just know that we are excited to have you join our team. Thank you. Item B, contract extension of Ask Me Local 202. This is an action item. Beth Davis, once again.
Thank you. As you may recall, the collective bargaining agreement between Rochester Community Schools and the Rochester Grounds Technology and Maintenance Union, Ask Me Local 202 Council 25 expired on June 30th of 2020. We have reached a tentative agreement on a one-year contract extension through June 30th of 2021. And additionally, there is, if there is a possible salary schedule reopeners, should there be an increase in the salary schedule being bargained or agreed to with the Rochester Support Personnel Association who have yet, not yet reached their contract upon its expiration on June 30th, 2020? This tentative agreement has been ratified by the union, and we are asking for your approval of the extension this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I'll take a motion to approve the contract extension as presented. Moved by Andrea, seconded by Michelle. A board discussion or public comment on this, board discussion or questions or public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the contract extension, please say aye.
Aye.
That is a seven-zero vote. Item C, recertification of extended COVID-19 learning plan. This is an action item. Dr. Shainer.
Thank you, Madam President. There's no change to the plan at this time, it is in the, the board packet. Again, the, the plan encompasses all of our, all of our options, and as we move forward and making decisions, it'll, as always, be in consultation with the Board. Thank you.
I'll take a motion to approve the plan as presented. Moved by Barb, seconded by Scott. Discussion or public comment on this, on the COVID-19 learning plan?
Madam President, one thing I forgot to mention, this is, this is required by the latest budget, budget law signed by the Governor. Prior to this, we had to recertify the plan every four weeks. Now we have to do it every calendar month.
Yep. Andrea?
I do think it's just important that we make the reminder again, as Dr. Shainer just said, that we're approving the entirety of the plan. We're approving that, that we have multiple measures in place for education, virtually, hybrid, remote, the entire plan. I think it's important that we remind the community that the entire plan and protocols and structure in place for whatever happens are all included in that plan.
Any other comments? So we did have some public comments, I believe, on this related to, I believe it's related to this, some people who filled out their forms and they have their hands raised in Zoom. So we can go ahead and take those now. And we can start with, the first one I had was Nina.
Thanks, Kristin.
Yep.
Just wanted to address Dr. Shainer's presentation about the COVID numbers and correct something that he, I think, misstated what I had said. I had, I said we were in D and going into E, which is the highest level. He said we, that I, he said I, that I said we were from C to D, which is not what I said. And I think it's important to understand, because, you know, as I said in my letter, the county and the state are not reporting the same numbers. The county last Thursday says we're still in C, but the state of Michigan on their website says we've been in D since October 6th. All of this to say, I think it's pretty clear where we're going, I think we all know what's happening. We are not going to be able to return to in-person learning under, under these numbers, unless a miracle happens, which I would love to see, but it's not going to happen. So it just, you know, rather than risk our health and, and the upset of our schedules and all of this, please send us back to remote learning. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Andrew Weaver.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
So I'll speak more to the community, because we deserve better than what we are still receiving from both the Board and from Shainer. The data that's being provided... The data that is being provided is not accurate, neither or relevant. So, Shaner showed a chart with the arrows on it, he failed to acknowledge the one green arrow on the chart that's pointing down, that is cases that lead to hospitalizations. Those would obviously be the more important cases to look at. Cases as a metric by itself is not relevant. We have to look at cases within context. And that means you look at where the deaths are, where the risk is. I've provided this data to the board and to Shaner twice. We have had zero deaths of student-age kids in Oakland County. Thirty-nine point nine percent of our deaths have been in the 80 to 89 range. I don't think our population inside our schools are that high, that range. We can all make personal choices on how to protect ourselves and manage our risks. Businesses have been open since April. This is, we are not in a position that we have to be doing all this extra stuff. We should have an in-person option, we should have a virtual option. And we should all be able to pick which one suits us best, and the in-person option should not be dictated by cases alone. Cases by themselves, and the way that the board and Shaner are both using them, is just a scare tactic for whatever motives they have, and I do not know what those are, I would not speculate to what those are. But they are not in the best interest of our kids and the education. They fail to acknowledge that, they keep bringing up equity, and what are we doing to be equitable? If we do this option, it creates an issue because they might not have the same computers, and Todd mentioned a few things with what the camera might do. The hybrid is not equitable. Kids that have two working parents are not getting the same support as a home, and we'll use Shaner's example because he said, right, his kids are doing well. Well, again, he probably has the means and the resources to make sure his kids are doing well. So, let's not act like it's equitable for the kids that do not come from that, the ones that are the most vulnerable in our community. And not one person on the board has really asked the tough question of Shaner. You disagree and keep moving forward. This is not okay, what we are doing to our community, and we deserve better.
Thank you. Jessica Uffer.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. I spoke at the last meeting regarding the issue of, I guess what we're calling distance learning now, and I truly appreciate finally hearing something about how the district is looking at distance learning opportunities and hearing from the committee that has met. I do wish that someone had notified me that that was happening because, again, there was a communication breakdown, and even though I've contacted the board numerous times on this issue, no one ever told me that any action was being taken. So, I really appreciate finally getting to hear something, whether that distance learning be via Zoom or in some other form of technology. I also appreciate the sentiment that we need to get this right, but if we wait until we can collect enough data on whether distance learning works, we will be waiting months, and it will be far too late to meet our students' education needs right now. If the board is capable of carrying on meetings with part of the attendees in person and part remotely via Zoom, why can't we make this happen in our schools, particularly at the secondary level? And second, while I admire and applaud the three incredible young people who spoke tonight as BOE representatives from our high schools, I'd like to remind everyone that they represent the most successful and capable cadre of our students. I would like the board to give just as much, if not more, attention to those students who are truly struggling with the hybrid model and asynchronous learning. The hybrid model is not sustainable, asynchronous learning is not sustainable. Most parents cannot sit next to their kids for hours on end to walk them through their school day. So, I would argue again that it makes the most sense to allow those students to attend school in person who want to attend in person, and allow those students to remain home who wish to remain home and attend remotely via Zoom, and for whom the virtual campus is not acceptable. This would reduce classroom densities on an ongoing basis and would allow quarantined students to participate from home. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also have a card from Brent Raymond. I'm not sure if Brent is still here, and if so, if it's appropriate for you to speak now, or if you wanted to wait till the end.
All right, good evening, board. I'm a parent of a 2nd grader at Long Meadow and a TK student at McGregor Elementary. Appreciate the time you've taken, not only tonight, but all the long nights that we know you have spent to try and make our school year work. I wanted to be here in person, now that we are allowed, to show you that there's a contingency of parents who care enough about what is currently going on to be here and not calling into some remote Zoom meeting where it's much easier to feign outrage. Let me be clear, though, there is outrage, and I have watched my children, fellow parents, and teachers turn from positive and functioning members of society into depressed shells of their former selves as they try to function in a dysfunctional system, all while trying to, all while trying and watching their children fall further behind. Based on all the backpedaling tonight, I must be hallucinating, Dr. Shaner, when I continue to hear all of these similar stories. I have watched my smart 2nd grader go from a truly, a kid who truly enjoys the process of learning to a child who is miserable and anxious every day, as his brain turns to mush and atrophies from staring at a screen and a lack of schoolwork. Don't ask these kids who are clearly better off, take what you did tonight and put them up on the screen. Go to a kid that's on the bubble, ask how they're doing. Putting these kids on the spot is disingenuous. A second wave of cases is coming. It doesn't take a genius to figure that out. The only question is how our school board members will react or not to the hysteria regarding case counts and what we know about this virus with the survival rate for those under 19 of 99.997%. If we also know that the survival rate for anyone under 69 is over 99.5%, you are following a narrative of fear, you can't see the long-term impacts that you are failing 100% of our district's children. My father, who fought in Vietnam, saw the real danger, and I can't believe Dr. Shaner would bring a war analogy to what's going on right now with a 99.997% survival rate for our children. That's the only war I see going on right now. It's clear today that, clear today more than ever, that RCS is scared more of the legal liabilities, more scared of losing funding, more scared of a minority of those who can't think long-term, all while our children look to us and see you sacrifice their futures for the sake of hysteria that has gone too far. No healthy society sacrifices the futures of their youth at the expense of the old, which shows how clearly broken this district is. But hey, full steam ahead with any activities that generate non-tax revenue, am I right? At some point, you will need to make a decision as to how you will fall on the continuation of this practice that clearly sacrifices our young for the old, the ones you claim to be looking out for, at the expense of those who have the luxury to stay inside and a lifetime where this was never asked of them. Because again, no functioning and future-looking society has ever done this. We cannot live in fear forever, and for all we know, there is no vaccine, as some still hold out hope for. I fear the only immunity on the horizon is those who are immune to the facts and who want to stay immune from making any tough decision that will stop this hysteria that is clearly impacting our most valuable resource. Thank you.
Any other public comment or board member comment? Seeing none, I will call for a vote to approve the recertification of the COVID-19 learning plan, which outlines all of our options, whether remote, hybrid, or in-person. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's a 7-0 vote. Item D is Oakland Together Schools COVID Support Fund. This is the inter-local agreement with Oakland Schools, or Oakland County. This is an action item. Matt McDaniel.
Thank you, Madam President. Oakland County is providing $28 million to Oakland County School Districts through their Oakland Together Schools COVID Support Fund. Based on the amount provided by Oakland County, Rochester Community Schools will receive nearly $1.8 million. To receive these funds, Rochester Community Schools and Oakland County must enter into an inter-local agreement pursuant to the Urban Cooperation Act of 1967, 1967 Public Act 7, MCL 124 dot 501, for the purpose of Oakland County Distributing Care Act funds to RCS. The agreement sets forth the terms and conditions to which funds will be used to assist school districts in meeting certain areas of need caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Based on this information, we recommend that the district accepts the terms and conditions set forth in the inter-local agreement and executes the agreement with Oakland County. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the inter-local agreement before we discuss. Moved by Mike, seconded by Scott. Discussion or public comment on this issue? Any board member questions or comments? It's pretty straightforward, I think. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is a 7-0 vote. Additional business, citizens present at the meeting, any citizen who is present who wanted to speak can come to the podium now in person and/or raise their hand in Zoom. I know it takes a few minutes potentially for the Zoom hands to raise, so I can go to members of the administration.
Madam President, again, just congratulations to the Moss and staff for all of their hard work and to the entire community for the national ribbon. I wish it was a normal year where they could go to Washington DC and receive their award, but again, congratulations, and congratulations, and thank you to Cindy and her crew for the tireless work on the one-on-one initiative. Thank you so much.
Any other members of the administration wish to comment? Any board members have anything to say? Mike? Oh, I'm sorry, Debbie, were you going to speak?
I can't.
Oh. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I froze on my side. I would just like to thank all of our presenters this evening for articulating the work that's being put into place, along with all of our colleagues in our buildings that are serving our students every day. Also, I'd like to do a special thank you to our school nurse, Tanya Regmont, and Susan Demannick, who are working countless hours to ensure that we have accurate information as we proceed through this COVID-19 experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And Mike?
I just wanted to thank Principal Guzman for hosting tonight, and also the ADMS PTA for the care packages that we got. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Michelle?
I guess I wanted to just say, I think that there have been some comments raised that I think, I believe you have been taking as an administration into account, but things like for two working parent homes, what support are we providing to students for students who are on lower socioeconomic or have additional learning difficulties? What things are we putting in place, or how are we tracking how those students are doing to make sure that they don't, that we don't create a gap that maybe wasn't there, or a gap becomes larger? And I know that, you know, I don't know if that falls under Tiffany Galladay's area with diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, if that's an area that she's looking into as well. But I just think we do need to keep that in mind, and someone mentioned it too, that we were asking questions sort of of the cream of the crop, so to speak, and I do hope that we are taking the look at the whole student population and how they're dealing with the hybrid asynchronous learning as well. I appreciate all the work that the teachers and the administrators have been doing because, as we've said, this is obviously not normal, and everyone has been going way above and beyond, but we just need to make sure that we are dotting all our i's and crossing our t's and looking for outside-the-box ways to continue to move forward. I also wanted to just mention as the liaison of RIA that they recently had a pumpkin carving competition, or not competition, but event down in Rochester as a fundraising and educational event to, for more people to learn about our organization, and that they are working with Tiffany Galladay as well to provide some workshops that are coming up in December and February. So, more information on that as we move forward.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it. Any other board member comments? Kevin, I didn't forget you, in case you wanted, in case you had anything to say.
So, I do think it's probably prudent to explain why I'm not there in person, and it's because this morning, one of my sons was quarantined from school because of a contact, he had contact with a positive COVID case last week. So, he's quarantined right now, and it just, it didn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me to attend in-person tonight, even though I likely do not have it and will not have it, neither will my son or anyone in my family, I understand all that. It still seemed, it just felt like the right thing to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. I don't think I see any other comments. Seeing none, I will call for a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:45 PM. Moved by Mike, seconded by Michelle. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is a 7-0 vote. Thank you all very much.